Thank you, Mayor, Council. There was only one update on this item this evening that Caleb would like to address.
Yeah, can everybody hear me? Cool. Caleb Allred, Planner 2 Transportation. At the last meeting, you'll remember that Mayor Colley actually asked about the extent that the town can require road widening. And so in response to that, the town can require road widening along a property's frontage, but only on their side of the right, of the cross-section. So essentially, everything that the town is requiring now is the limits to the town's authority in that regard.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that update. Appreciate that. Okay, we are scheduled to finish the public hearing tonight. Was there any public hearing comments continued, sir?
No, sir.
Anyone here in the room want to speak on this item? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing then.
Make a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? That passes 5-0. We have, we're scheduled to take action either on August 9th or tonight. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or anything on this item? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve this item if someone would like to make such a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I, we should probably read it right off the screen. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Correct.
If you do that, Councilmember Rabadi, I'd appreciate it.
I move to approve ordinance 2022-186-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to principal usage, signage, and access and circulation. I'll second.
I have a motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chris Lawson, Planner and Manager, will facilitate the next item.
All right, thanks, Eric. Good evening, Council. So tonight, I'll provide staff follow-up from the first meeting in which I briefed Council on the proposed text amendments. Again, these are all related to tree preservation, common open space, and landscaping. Tonight is also the scheduled public hearing on these amendments. And I'll stay, I don't have a very long formal presentation, but I'll just say, we covered a lot of information last time, so if I missed anything, if I didn't follow up properly, please let me know. I'll be happy to for the, for the next meeting if needed. So I want to start by noting that several attachments have been added or updated. These include Attachment 3, which deals with surrounding community research. At the last meeting, I was asked to include the proposed amendments within that research for comparison. It includes Attachment 7, which provides examples of common open space. There was a lot of discussion around common open space last time. And as well as Attachment 8, which provides some limited examples of green stormwater infrastructure or GSI. So again, please let me know if I can dive into these attachments to help or provide additional information if needed. Within the presentation, I've only added, only updated two slides. The new language is in red, so I'll slide to that. 16. And, and these are, the updates basically, I've taken from Town Council's discussion at the last meeting, I have tweaked some of the language, just for your reaction, just to see, it seemed to be some of the consensus, some things did not come to consensus. And let me review that first, and then, again, looking for feedback, just like the last meeting, please. So this one's fairly straightforward, but the, this deals with sites that don't necessarily have the required percentage of tree preservation, so that could be below 15% or below 20%. And how much the town would ask a development to replant or establish new tree canopy. This number has kind of jumped around, it's been different spots, but the latest thing I propose is just to say that if a site does not have 15%, then it must replant up to half of the minimum required tree preservation. So let's say a site has to provide 15% tree canopy, they only have 5%, an additional 2.5 percentage of that site would have to be added as tree canopy. So it's not full replacement, it's not no replacement, it's just in the middle. So that's a change from last time. There was not really consensus that I remember on this section, so I just propose this, again, for further discussion, for, you know, feedback. And I'll just jump to the next slide and just continue if you'd like. Okay. The, the next slide deals with common open space, which was a big point of discussion. This, this one had a lot of changes, but basically what I proposed is to attempt to balance the various items that were discussed. So basically, if, when I look back to what was originally proposed, the common open space was required only on larger sites than it is currently, but as a trade-off for that, more focused types of common open space are required. So, so areas that are truly more usable for, for folks that go to these sites, so recreation areas, squares, pauses, outdoor dining areas, instead of allowing stormwater ponds, overhead utility lines, other, other natural areas that might already count towards tree preservation. So staff stuck with the five acres for now, again, opened a discussion, but that was that trade-off. Also, there's a lot of discussion about requiring it at industrial sites. And again, no consensus, so propose some language, and we'll explain it this way, is that, so staff still proposing five acres in size, but we're no longer exempting industrial uses as a blanket, as a blanket completely. To allow some flexibility in that is that industrial sites could replace the common open space area with 100% tree replacement. So if we think about common open space currently, natural areas are in allowed common open space. They would no longer be in allowed common open space with this amendment, but they, an industrial site specifically, instead of having to make a plaza square, outdoor dining area, the industrial site could use trees still. So it's, it's a little bit of trade-off, which is why I proposed it like that today. And then final bullet point is just now accessible, now requires an accessible pedestrian route. It's not something that's necessarily required now. It was a point that was brought up the last meeting to require some kind of pedestrian route to this open space, just to allow it to be more usable. Let me scan my notes here. I do want to pull up Attachment 7. Eric, is there an easy way to do that? Thank you. So Attachment 7 is examples of common open space, and they're all aerial perspectives, so maybe not the, not from a perspective that is, you know, as if we were going to walk up to it, but it provides the size of a site, the type of common open space required, and then kind of what it looks like from a satellite image in the use of the site. And these are a few plans that have been approved in the last four or five years. Don't really have a real plan to go over these, but you can kind of see through, so this site is three and a half, 3.88 acres. So common open space would not be required now, but, sorry, common open spaces would not be required with the five acres proposed, but this site did take advantage of the natural hazard area slash natural area for their open space, which overlaps with a riparian buffer with their tree protection area. So it, essentially, I guess my point is that it's still, with the current regulations, that area still would have looked very similar to what it is shown here today. It just kind of would have had a different name, depending on the regulation it was trying to satisfy. And I'll just keep scrolling down. This is a site, it's known as Schools Village, at the corner of Davis Drive in Parkside Valley. This would no longer, and the proposed regulations have provided any sort of common open space. This site provided what we labeled as passive recreation, essentially, if you've driven past on Davis Drive, you'll see a gazebo, an area out there. Not saying that they, they wouldn't be allowed to provide something like this, but this satisfied that common open space requirement currently, and that's what was provided. And I'll just keep going through the rest of them. This is, this is a hotel, I can't remember the name of the hotel, but it's, it's a 1020 Lower Shiloh Way, so at the, at the bottom of the screen in this aerial, that's 540, or the exit from 540. This site used kind of a remainder area up here to provide a mulch walking path. And I wish I'd provided a, like a picture from a ground perspective, because you actually have to go upstairs from the parking area to get to this, this area up here. So the site is 4.39 acres, so it would not be, would not have had to provide that if the acreage was at five or larger for providing common open space. But, but this is an example, right at that five to, three to five acre mark. Just keep going. This is, this is the Fifth Third Bank, I think I've discussed several times, to Council before. Again, it's, it's about an acre, so it wouldn't have to provide common open space with a three or five acre standard, but you can kind of see, if you pull in off of McCrimmon, there's a bench and seated area that was provided between the ABC store and the bank here. And that was the common open space that currently at the UDO. And I think I have one more, I guess. This is the, what is this? This is the concrete plant that's currently at the, at the dead end of International Drive. And the site is, is between five and six acres, so it would meet that five acre threshold. It's an industrial use, and they provided common open space. It is a seating area kind of back here. If you can follow my mouse, the entryway is actually down the bottom, and you have to come around, so it truly is for the people that were, that are on the site, and kind of out of the way of any, any industrial trucks that would come in. I think it was designed that way on purpose. But, so, so either with three acres or five acres, this, this site would now have to provide some kind of open space, but they could trade it in lieu for additional tree preservation area and not have to worry about, what did they provide? I think it's seated benches, I think is what that small text says right there. So these are just some examples of items that have been provided in the last few years, along with some of the size of the parcel, size of the space, and kind of what was provided. But, but with that, that's really the end of the formal presentation I have. It reminds me, there, tonight's a public hearing. Also happy to kind of go back into anything else we discussed last meeting, or any other attachments that were provided. Thank you.
So I'll just start, and can you remind us why we're introducing the minimum acreage?
Yeah.
Because it seems like there is good, good outcomes even with one acre slots.
So the, the minimum, it's a few reasons. So the minimum acres was, was started as, it's a few reasons, let me, let me think about this for a second. So why did we start with, okay. So essentially, there's a few reasons. So the, the first one is, as we're layering on additional requirements, some sort of minimum size for some of these was proposed. So common open space, I think staff felt if we were gonna, the town's going to increase the tree preservation requirements, some of the landscaping buffer requirements, other things, where is somewhere that a little wiggle room can be given to these developments? And common open space was identified as one of those things. Another reason was that a small site, like a bank, like something else, maybe isn't the best, they're not going to be able to provide the best usable common open space because a site's so small, common open space is not park space, it's not a greenway, it's not intended to replace those things, it is just strictly for the users of that development. So, so at least, I guess in my own mind, if a site is small enough, it can provide a walking path, they can provide a bench or somewhere, but it's not truly connected to anything else, it's not really adding a great deal of value. And then the, originally, I guess at the last meeting, we proposed to just remove almost entirely all industrial sites. Industrial sites are a little larger anyway, and generally, and that's why those were included, but we've ended up tonight with the ability to replace it with tree preservation. And then finally, the last point is, I think with common open space, when you look at some of these sites, let's, let's start with the first one, if you don't mind. So this is the, I think this is the Shiloh Animal Hospital. There are a number of sites that their common open space has ended up being, overlapping with other requirements such as tree preservation or riparian buffer like this one. And I think one of the goals along was to really make it so common open space was truly usable, and didn't just end up as a checkbox to get a plan approved. It wasn't just, oh, we're going to show it in this area, and it meets the definition of the UDO, so, you know, the town has to approve it. Want to, want to focus in areas that it might be more desired by the developers, and it might actually provide more a desirable site feature for the town.
Okay, I'd just be curious if my fellow council members have any thoughts, that it seems like requiring it for everybody's, was fine, and people are finding a way to do it, so it's kind of a not broken, don't fix it. So I'd be in favor of getting rid of any minimum sizes. The bank did it with a very small thing, everyone has the opportunity to actually make it trees, which we really like, and we would lose that ability to make it trees if there's no requirement at all. So that's my thoughts there, and hopefully we can all circle back on that. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I have a question on the open space, and then go back to the tree preservation. So on the common open space, I was going to ask a question, question similar to those lines, but last time, our, our last meeting, a few of us expressed interest in decreasing that five acres to potentially three. So is there a reason why you didn't incorporate that?
Yeah, so originally, when this was proposed, it was, the, the thought in staff's mind was increase the acreage, but really focus the areas that are, have to be usable space. So currently, the way the UDO is set up is that places like natural areas are allowable as common open space, and thus, there isn't allowed overlap, and that, that offers some flexibility. So when the, the size of the parcel was increased, and the, kind of staff proposed to really focus areas that have to be used, the worry was, and the trade-off was, as sites get smaller, then they have to dedicate more land to a, a, you know, plaza, gazebo area, something like that. And, and thus, that trade-off kind of went away. So what the UDO currently does is allow for some areas to serve as common open space and those other natural hazard areas, without truly requiring more hard infrastructure to be built on a smaller site. So I would say, when I'm analyzing this between meetings, I would almost say that if, if Council feels that these examples are working, that you think this, this is fine, there's nothing that really needs to be changed, I would almost rather keep the current UDO, or propose to keep the current UDO, rather than making common open space be more, more structured, more focused on those plazas areas, and still requiring them at, at every site or smaller sites around town. So does that, does that answer kind of make sense?
Somebody have a follow-up question to that? So if we were to leave the UDO as it is, I, well, I liked the, in the proposed text amendments, allowing, instead of just an open space, but to meet that need using tree preservation. So if we were gonna, if we were gonna keep, go back to smaller properties, I would like to still keep this portion of the, your proposed text amendments.
Okay, thus, still requiring some of that focus open space, but allowing tree preservation to take the place if?
Yeah, that's how I feel. I'd rather them have that than cut down trees to stick up a volleyball court, just to meet our, our UDO. So then, my other question goes back to tree preservation. So the, on slide 16, the proposed change that you added here about sites, planting new trees in order to meet at least half of the minimum required tree canopy requirement of 15 or 20. So are you saying that if for a non-residential use, and they, to meet the requirement, they would only have to plant to seven and a half percent trees?
That's right. And, and I'll say that some of these things, there was no consensus, and I proposed new language that necessarily wasn't voted on or asked for, but wanted to get more feedback from, from Council, so this stuff is, text can, can be amended. But yes, to answer your direct question, yeah, it would, it would be whatever half of the number would be, that's all that would have to be replanted.
Okay, well, I feel like that's going backwards. Because, so during the last meeting, I, I'm in, I am in favor of minimum, if there's 5% of tree canopy exists, then they need to plant at a minimum another 5% to get up to 10. And there were other council members during that meeting that were in favor of them planting the full number of trees, they get them up to 15%, which I'm good with too. I've said before, I would, I'd like to see 50% trees, but I know that's not possible. So I feel like your, these, the text in red is going the opposite direction. So I, given the choice between your, the purpo, the new proposed and what you proposed previously, I'd prefer what was proposed previously.
Okay. And, and I'll say, from my, my staff perspective, this is one of those numbers that's kind of been all over the place, and if, I haven't gotten, I don't know, if there's a, if there's a specific number Council would like, I'm interested in hearing that, that number. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're probably going to end up having to do a couple of straw polls after everyone gets a chance to speak. Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So Chris, I like the idea that the industrial uses would no longer be exempt. And I know that was, not everybody was on that same thought process before, so I, and I do like the idea that they can choose then to do the tree preservation instead of a common open space. I love that idea. The, the last bullet you have on that side, where you say now requires accessible pedestrian route, are you talking about just within, just for use of the employees on that site? You're not talking about open to public pedestrian use, right? Because that was another part of the conversation that we all talked about too.
That was another point of the, of the, you're correct, that was another part of the discussion. Let me look up the exact language, and, because if it's accessible from a site, if it's accessible from a site, the site is also required to be accessible from the public right-of-way, so ultimately, it would be accessible, but maybe not directly from a nearest sidewalk to it. Let me, let me find that language, just to reread exactly how it reads. But no, it'd be, it would be accessible for the user of that site, not necessarily me walking by of random.
General public. And a lot of the, a lot, especially the industrial uses, they're not in an area where there's often a lot of public walking by anyhow, so that, I do, I do understand that too.
Yeah, and I just found the language. It discusses usable by the occupants and users of the development, and providing an accessible pedestrian route for those, for those users.
Okay, I think I can live with that. I, again, definitely love the, the idea where they have the option of preserving more trees, but let me, but my other question then about that is, based on the conversations you've had on site plans just recently, how many do you think would take advantage and give up the common open space and go for the tree preservation? And I love, that's a really unfair question.
No, 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 it's, I'd say the biggest worry for a lot of these sites is more the tree preservation, because it's so much more, you cannot use this area, and it's a larger percentage. The common open space, if I could describe it in a way that I feel is accurate, it's, that's almost an afterthought and an annoyance afterward, that when, you know, the tree preservation's really, you cannot disturb this area at all, even during development. Whereas open space, you can grade around it and then later reconstruct it. How much would they take advantage of it? I think it depends on the, so a lot of these more industrial types, especially the last few years, are, are national businesses. They're, they're not specific and local to Morrisville or this area. It'll kind of depend on the site designer, I think, who are generally more local, people out of Cary, Raleigh, Durham, kind of know the code better. And I, my guess would be that if additional tree preservation is easier to provide, or the owner's not really interested in providing some sort of open space amenity, that they'll, they'll go for the tree preservation.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that, I, thank you for that. Those are all the comments I have right now.
Okay. Councilmember Rabadi, please?
Is there any reason not to allow, I understand that the, like, right now, or you're proposing that industrial sites be allowed to replace common open space 100% with tree uses? Is there any reason not to allow all types of development to, like, to, I mean, why are we legislating open space if people don't want it, and they'd rather leave trees? I'd rather they leave trees too.
That's, that's a good question. And what I would say for this is, so, so the proposed amendments would allow up to half of it to be replaced. The industrial was allowed specifically because, well, let me answer this way, it depends on, does the Council value that every site must have some sort of open space, or that they would be allowed to, to add extra tree preservation? I think that is the ultimate question is?
See, I don't see that many types of non-industrial uses that wouldn't naturally add some type of common open space, just because, like, industry, you know, in an industrial use, maybe they don't care, but if it's, like, if it's a biofarm company, I think they're going to, they're going to have some type of, like, gathering area with tables, they're going to have, you know, they're going to do that anyway, so I say we go for the trees. I mean, that would be my take on it, I don't know how other people feel about it, but if, if we can let everybody, like, if we don't legislate common open space, but we say that one way or the other, it if we don't legislate common open space, but we say that one way or the other, it has to be either trees or common open space, I think more people would go for trees, and that's, to me, that's fine.
Isn't that what this is doing, though? We're taking common open space, continuing to require it, and they can replace it with trees?
Only if they're industrial right now. This proposal, only if they're industrial.
So I guess what you're saying is, take that 100% and apply it to every use. Say, every use could say, "We don't want open space, but we'll save more trees." That's, okay.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. I don't speak for everybody.
So, just to be clear, so that would include commercial, mixed use, but not the residential? Or, what are we talking about?
So, yeah, excellent clarification. So residential doesn't have to ride open space, they provide that parkland payment.
Industrial is the only one that does common open space, right?
No, every, every use currently provides opens, every non-residential use or mixed use provides common open space. So strictly residential, no open space, they handle parkland payment of use or parkland dedication. Everything else, from a Starbucks to a bank, to a, you know, a vertically mixed-use development, provides some level of common open space now.
Which is really important in some of those uses. So I would have to think that through a little bit, Ann.
Well, unlike the last one, there's been lots of, I'll get to you in just a moment, there's been lots of updates and lots more discussion on this one, so we're not planning on voting on this one tonight. So this is about discussions and keeping this moving forward, just to be clear about where we are. Councilmember Garamella.
My apologies, I missed the last meeting, but I'm trying to get speed up. But my understanding is, when a tree preservation area is first designed, that you cannot, you know, disturb that area, and that whole development is done, what are the safeguards that we are putting that afterwards those trees are not cut? Or even if the tree falls, the developer will say, like, "I'm not obligated, that was tree preservation, it's natural, I don't want to go disturb or do anything." Because I've seen a lot of developments, like, they create those, like, orange buffers, and then halfway through, some of the trees start disappearing there. And then, then like, later on, like, after the whole thing is done, we don't have any means to basically say, "Have you preserved that?" over a period of time. The intent is right, but who is going behind them and telling them? Or if the tree has fell down, like, "Oh, that's its natural area." Like, Breckon Ridge has more than 30 to 40 acres of tree preserves, and if a tree falls down, we can't go there and do anything. So how would, how would you handle that?
Yeah. And that's a, yeah, that's an excellent question. I don't know if I have all the answers to that right now, but essentially, the theory and the structure of it is that there's existing tree canopy, it is fenced off, not allowed to be disturbed at all, and is platted as protected tree preservation area. And so those trees are just supposed to grow, and if they happen to do fall from a storm or something, there's nothing that really covers that, and there's nothing that needs to be replaced, because it's supposed to be within that tree canopy area. Other than that, other than the natural circumstances, that area is theoretically supposed to never be disturbed. I mean, limited maintenance, so you don't have overgrown brush, but the rest of it's supposed to be preserved. The way we currently enforce it, our staff currently enforce it, I'd say, two main ways. First off, our code enforcement procedures, you know, driving around the town, noticing things, getting reports. I'm not aware of anybody in the four years that I've been here that has gone in and actively destroyed trees on purpose that are in those areas. If they, if they do, there are enforcement mechanisms in UDO, including fines, including replacements. And there's a section in UDO that's remaining that deals with how those trees have to be replaced, and fines and things like that. The other method is plating tree preservation area at the end of a development. And so what that does is, when, you know, somebody, a developer calls, myself or a different planner, and says, "I want to do this here," or even Towne and Cary says, "I want to put a sewer line right through this wooded area, it's a great place to put a sewer." You know, when we're researching the property, it's shown for everyone to see that that's a tree preservation area, and it cannot be disturbed. And those are the ways that it's enforced. Now, coming back to, if a tree falls from a storm, not aware, I'm not sure what we do, or if there's any power that the town does have to go about getting that tree replaced. And then, of course, if there's a, if there's a tree that poses a danger of some sort of a structure, that's defined as being allowed to be removed.
Yeah, and that's what I was getting to, because we have mostly pines, and like, when you basically corner a certain percentage of tree preservation, and then do a whole development over a period of time, the roots are not strong enough. And then, you know, the owner can come and say, "Oh, that tree is going to fall, it's a safety cut." So I've seen several of those happening. So we don't have, like, any means, you know, intended originally worse to protect trees, but afterwards it's slowly diminishing, either to some means the trees are going.
Yeah. And I'll say that, at least when we were looking, the staff was looking at designing this, that's why one of the reasons that preserving specifically very large trees was not as high of a priority in staff's mind as saving just large clusters of trees that can grow, just because at that point, there's not as much of a way to replace them. I will say, though, that staff does get plenty of calls about people wanting to remove trees, checking with staff, and I believe or aware of most trees that are being removed, and making sure they are permitted prior or authorized to be removed.
And the last is, we don't have, do we have any rules in place where we talk about new development, but existing development, the homes or the HOAs? Where I get a lot of calls, or basically requests through the HOA, where, "My tree is too big, I want to cut it," you know, "in front of my yard." And, "Oh, it could be going into my foundation, it could be going into my sewage." Any hypothetical reasons that they can think of, and then they'll come up with this excuse. So what are the measures that we have from a town point of view?
Yeah.
That can be done?
So, I say, sorry. I'll say that years ago, maybe close to 20 or longer, there were landscaping buffers that were required, that were placed on privately-owned property. And planning staff, long before me, somewhere along the way, made the change that an outside buffer cannot be on a privately-owned property. So I can't buy a house in Mooresville on a newer development, and all that landscape ever is on my property. So what that's done is, it's pushed the responsibility to the HOA, and made a clear delineation of what's supposed to be preserved, what's not. There are still landscaping buffers that are required in the front of a house, and it doesn't really look as much like a buffer, it looks just more like one tree per yard. And there's been flexibility granted to UDO to allow smaller trees, because over time, there have been some neighborhoods with larger trees that run into those issues. Now, when, when staff gets that request, more recently, it's been larger groups of neighborhoods rather than an individual homeowner. And that allows us to take more time to look into it, to make sure that it's a true request, what's the plan for replacement, and that trees aren't just being removed and not replaced in any way. But, but the, but that does happen, but yeah.
And we don't have any measures for that? So you're just saying...
The trees do get replaced. They might not, you know, clear if it's a larger tree, it might not be replaced with the same size, but it's the same type of tree, it's generally supposed to be the same size. But the thing about neighborhoods and subdivisions is, some of them, probably prior to, I don't know, let's say 2010, some of them each had their own landscaping plans or approved. It takes a little bit of research to figure out what was supposed to be there, what wasn't supposed to be there. Did some person plant another tree along the way that wasn't a town-required tree? But no, we look into, you know, what needs to be replaced, what doesn't.
So we've all had a chance, and why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing? So now it's open. Do we have any public hearing input at this time? Town clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Since we're gonna be doing some more discussions, I'd like to just leave that open till the next meeting, where we're hopefully gonna vote as well. I think at the next meeting, it'd be a good idea for us to have the discussion be kind of pointed towards some of the items that we still don't quite have consensus on. And we can feel free to discuss it a little bit more now, but it sounds like whether or not the replacement trees, when they're not up to the 15 or 20, do we want it to go up to the 15 or 20? Are we happy with a half language, as stated here, the 10% for the 15, and maybe a 15% for the 20, for example? So that would be something we should continue to discuss. Another straw poll would probably be whether or not there should be no minimum acres at all. And if that's not the case, and we do want minimum acre, should it be three or five? Because that was a talking point as well. Or something in between, because we can be open. And then, should we allow the tree replacement method to be allowed to do more than just industrial? And what the details of that would be? So we're a little bit more informed about what that would look like, moving forward. And I'd like to say, thank you very much for all the examples of what the common open spaces look like. That really helped me to understand that it's actually adding value to us now. And that's why I sort of thought that it's a not broken, don't fix. We're gonna have another round right now, and I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
So I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement about the public hearing. I didn't hear any, I didn't hear any conversation about leaving it open or not.
Right. Towards the end of this discussion, we can, I'll bring that up and entertain a motion. And if the motion goes forward, we'll be closing it, if that's okay with everybody. So I had some other thoughts. One thing that came up last time, that we didn't discuss at all this time, is whether or not mixed use could be added to the residential 20% category. Any pros and cons for that? Because I think a lot of our McCrimmon area extension is going to be mixed use, and if we're looking to do as much as we can with trees, that would be an opportunity. Because from, in the briefing, it says the maximum tree canopy, that a development site must preserve our 19 and 10% for right now, so going up to 20% is not really that much of a difference. And I'm gonna do a little bit of soapbox here, that nine days ago, Antonio Gutierrez, the Secretary General of the United Nations, warned, and I quote, "Half of humanity is in the danger zone from floods, droughts, extreme storms, and wildfires. No nation is immune, yet we continue to feed our fossil fuel addiction." He also added, "We have a choice, collective action or collective suicide, it is in our hands." So, things like this, even at the very local level, it is truly in our hands, and no steps in the right direction for tree preservation or sustainability are too small to matter, but the bigger the steps we do take, the better we should feel about how we are treating this endangered resource, which is our responsibility to safeguard, our small portion of the planet here in Mooresville. At the very least, I would like to move mixed use to be included in the 20% residential category. And to really demonstrate our leadership on this important item, I would like the 15% residential categories to be 20%, and the non-residential, which staff has told us is currently 19%, which isn't really a significant improvement to 20%, be raised to 25, to really make a difference. It's too late to preserve the tree canopy in most of our town. I'm very interested in our political will to save a little bit more of what is left under our authority. So that's just something I wanted to share, because we're gonna be discussing it more in a couple of weeks. Does anyone have any other items they'd like to share on this item? Mayor Protem Johnson?
So, just to talk about the last portion of what you just spoke about, we did talk about the last time, and the majority of council was not in favor of moving forward. I think it's important to remember, moving forward with your suggestion, I think it's important to remember the chart that Chris shared with us, that showed how, what they're proposing does significantly make a difference. And so I thought the majority was okay, and I was one of those in the majority that was okay with the staff's percentages that they came up with. So I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned...
Okay. Councilmember Robati?
I just, excuse me, I just wanted to support Mayor Protem Johnson, in that I think that the changes that Town Planner Lawson suggested were not about percentages, but were more about optimization of larger blocks of trees. And I thought that, I thought they did a really great job of walking the line between what's feasible for site development versus saving more trees, and kind of made it an "and" situation rather than an "or."
Okay, good. Okay, I think we're done with discussions on this topic. Do you have any other questions for us before we start to close out?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. I was just hoping to touch on a couple things, just for clarification, if it did help inform your discussion. So I know there's been some discussion about that 100% swap, so just wanted to remind the council that that's industrial only. All other uses, right now, at least how the text is written, there could be up to a 50% swap. When you get to those larger shopping centers in particular, you know, activating those areas, providing plazas, gathering areas, creating more of a destination, does add value. So, you know, particularly for our larger developments, just some consideration to maybe, you know, still requiring some common open area. But I did want to make sure that the council was aware that the draft includes 50% for everything but industrial, 100% for industrial, just to inform that discussion. And then, we've talked about McCrimmon a lot at the last meeting, a little bit at this meeting. You may recall that we really expedited those text amendments last year, and we knew trees were a sensitive issue, and that the tree amendments were gonna lag. So it's kind of a stopgap, if you will, there is 150% requirement along the McCrimmon extension area. So all those developments that are in right now have 150% requirement, and that is proposed to remain even for the ones that would come after these amendments. So just wanted to note that as well.
And your name and role for the record, please? Thanks.
Sorry, Mayor. Michelle Stegall, Planning Director.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Robati, did you have another thought?
No, sorry.
If I could follow up with what Director Stegall said, the other thing about the McCrimmon area was that 150% of the landscaping buffers along the streets were also required. And we haven't had a lot of developments be submitted for that area. So council, you should expect to start to see some development in that area within the next six months at least. So it won't be, most of it will not be applicable to this, these tax amendments, but we did have that 150% and other intensified landscaping requirements in that area.
Okay, great. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing, if that's the will of the council. Okay, hearing none. We thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in a couple of weeks, on August 9th, correct?
Mayor, if I could, before Chris leaves... So at the last meeting, council expressed a real desire to keep these moving and get these in place as quickly as possible. So I just need, what have you directed Chris to bring back to you for your additional discussion that you don't have tonight, to make those decisions, if you want to adopt this next week, or next meeting? What is it that you need? Is it just discussion amongst yourself, or do you need additional information to consider?
Mayor Protem Johnson?
So I'm not, I'm not sure there's anything, I don't need anything. Let me say that. And I'm not, I don't think I heard anybody else want any additional information. The only, and I will ask this of council, too, the only, the only area, I wonder if we need any, maybe examples, like, you've shared a couple of really good examples when we talked about common, open common space, and that was really helpful. Do we need any visual examples when it comes to the tree preservation, when the site must, you know, we're talking about the 15% and the 20% requirement, to meet halfway to the minimum tree canopy requirement, the 15 or the 20%? Do we want to see any examples of that? And could you even give us any examples of that?
I could do what I did on an earlier slide, which is just an aerial box that I drew, kind of like that, sort of. Would that be helpful? I don't know if that really gets at what you're asking.
So you wouldn't give us anything more than that? I forgot about those, actually, so...
I can, I can do this, I can think about other ways to demonstrate what that would look like, too.
And I'm sorry, I'm talking about in the example, in your, when we talk about if there isn't, exist... there isn't existing canopy, I'm talking about the example where there isn't existing canopy, and how somebody would plant. I don't know, maybe there isn't a way to give us an example of that? And maybe we don't want that, so I don't even want to ask for it until, until, do we need that, or is that just a conversation that we need to have when we're, when the full council is here? That's a question for people up here. I don't need it.
Yeah, I think the difference between 10 and 7.5 isn't really going to demonstrate much an example.
Okay, then we don't need an example, Chris, thank you.
It's a good idea. Visuals are important.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we just need to, I think we'd feel more comfortable if we had all seven here, having heard this new information, to just sort of finish this up in a couple of weeks. That's an expectation that we did set, so I'd be really leery of voting on it tonight.
And I would just, to clarify, I think, I think we're still on target to vote on this on August 9th. Is that, I mean, again, that's a question amongst all of us.
Councilmember Fender?
Well, I'm wondering if we need consensus on the, the preserving or adding 5% to the trees versus the 7.5 and 10%? Do we need consensus on that before next week? Or do you need to know what direction we would like for you to go?
Yeah, I, I think, I think my plan would be maybe to provide some, some changes to some attachments for more examples, but essentially to leave everything as is and wait for your direction at the next meeting. If you vote, I can then amend the ordinance to match what you say, essentially. I think specific guidance as early in the process as possible is always very helpful. But if, you know, we're missing two, two councilmembers, and if you're not comfortable, I understand that as well.
I just don't think anybody asked for that one proposed new tax. So.
Yeah, looking forward to the next meeting, I think it might be good. I talked about straw polls, if you give us the options, 7.5%, 10%, 15%, and then those will be the points that we can talk to, rather than having to restart the discussion.
Okay.
So that would be helpful, about whether or not there's any acreage requirement at all, or three or five. That seems to be where people are interested in discussing.
Sure. And so from my perspective, it's always helpful to know what you, what you guys would like. Basically, if I do a PowerPoint where it has these questions that really were the key, that would be helpful for leading discussion.
I think we react really well to direct questions like that, I think.
Yeah.
Straw poll, okay. Can do, thank you.
At the last meeting, council indicated that you wanted to move very quickly on these. So with the direction that we're heading, I guess my concern is, we come back to you, there's more discussion, but you won't have any actual language necessarily to go along with the outcome of that discussion. So the likelihood that we're putting this off to a fourth meeting, I think is probably pretty high, and I just know that the council wanted to move quickly, so.
So that's, we can approve things and have you guys create the language and we sign it after? We'd have to have a whole nother meeting. I think we'd probably be comfortable.
Well, I'll add, you have not been comfortable with that in the past.
That's right.
That, it's, I think Michelle and I are saying the same thing. What else do you need to talk about it tonight? And why do you not want to do that? Sort of why I'm asking, what else do you need? I'm just trying to help keep you moving, as you indicated you wanted to.
Well, if it takes a full meeting to bring something back, we can do those straw polls right now on those items, and it'll be the will of these five. So essentially, we are voting on it tonight.
I don't think we're essentially voting on it tonight.
I disagree with that. It gives Chris the opportunity to put the language in place for you to review, to make a final vote, or discuss further at the next meeting.
We do want to keep it moving, so why don't we give that a try? So, why don't we say, talking about the replacement, the language as proposed is up to half the minimum of the 15 or the 20. So why don't we say there's going to be three options? Either the 7.5% as written here, 10% as was mentioned was something that people came across, or the full 15. And we'll do a straw poll once. If we don't have, I guess, three for any one of them, we'll drop off the last one and keep moving forward. Is that an okay process for everybody? Kind of, we can discuss in between. So who would like that to go forward as written, essentially 7.5% of a 15?
So you're talking about the red text?
Yes, the red text right there at the bottom.
Okay.
So you're, it's, are we going to, are we going to agree with staff's recommendation in red?
I like the language that staff had in the first place. That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't need the, the part in red, to me decreases the amount of required canopy, and I don't, I don't see the need for that. I think it was fine the way it was written in the first place.
Well, I'd be concerned that if it has zero right now, we're only getting up to five.
If it has zero right now, if it has zero right now, what do you want the developer to do? Build a forest? I mean.
No, just plant trees, because we need trees to have a better town.
Right, but I think 5% of the site is, I feel like that's reasonable on a site that has no trees at all. That means that we're getting no, no benefit from that site at all. I think, I think to require more than that, I think is just, I think is onerous to the developer.
Okay, so let me reframe the question, and we'll have four options. Leave it as is, without the proposed red, so that could be an option, or the 7.5%, the 10, or the 15. Does that sound okay?
The as is, is the 10.
And the red is the 7.5.
Yeah.
It's, it's red language or no red language, that's the question. But I think you are correct. Yeah, that's the question.
Or 15, which is what we're asking for in general.
We, no. I don't think that's a we thing. I think that's a you thing.
Okay.
I would, sorry.
So does council just want to vote on black text or red text?
Yes.
Okay, and let's have a quick discussion about that. Which one do you guys feel would end up preserving more trees? Because it's not clear to me.
Black text.
The black text.
Black text.
That would do more no matter what?
It would depend on how many trees were existing.
Not really.
I guess I read that to bring it up to 10%, period.
In the example of if only five starts?
But if it's, there's zero, to bring it up to 10%, that's the way I read that.
The black text, no. The black text, if there was zero, would bring it up to five.
So I was going for a flat 10 instead of a flat 7.5 as proposed.
Yeah, that's what I thought was already being proposed.
But would you agree, Mr. Lawson, that that's not what the black text says? If there's nothing there, it only goes up to five?
So, yeah, and the question is, which one would, would save more? It depends on the number of trees left. But it, yes, if there are zero on either, either circumstance, the black would be five, the red would be seven and a half. If a site has more than that, that's when it starts to get numbered, difference on which one would preserve more trees.
Like if it already has 7.5%, red wouldn't do anything, but the other one would make it go up to 12.5.
I don't think I, I don't know if I understood you, but can you say that again? I'm sorry.
If the site already had 7.5%, the black text would make it go up to 12.5.
That's correct, yeah.
So. Okay, any questions or discussion before we just say straw poll on the black text or the red proposed? Seeing none, who would be in favor of the black text? I think you have a winner.
All right, problem solved.
Okay.
Chris, do you have everything you need on this one?
I think I do. Thank you.
Is there anything council needs to know that there's a concern about that decision?
Not on that one. So essentially, council, this group's straw poll has voted for what was proposed the last meeting. That seemed to be, okay, yeah. No, it's, on this one, that's, that's everything I need on that one to get the language set up exactly as council wanted it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one that I think we can address as a group is the, whether or not there should be a minimum acres and what that should be to require a common open space. Just to circle back, we're saying that the common open space can be replaced with trees, but as proposed right here, it would have to be five acres or more in size, and we saw some examples where there were smaller areas that were actually used for common open space. So I propose to just say there should be no minimum, or there should be a three-acre minimum, or the five-acre minimum as shown here. Would that be an acceptable thing to straw poll on, or did you have something to add?
May I complicate it somewhat further? So I did hear earlier that, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I provided examples of what the UDO would require now. I didn't, just wanted to point out, that, that might have been an option someone proposed also, was just to kind of remain the common open space as the text currently is before any of these changes were proposed.
I think that would be the zero, right?
That would be that every site has to provide some level of common open space, but that the focused uses of the, that I provided would, would not, it would still be allowed, but also those natural hazard areas, other areas would still be allowed. So it would not change anything like it, then, this option would not change anything related to the proposal that I've proposed, but it would still require common uses on every single site, essentially the way the framework is now, without any kind of, any swaps, any, for tree preservation, anything like that.
So the option would be leave it as is, everyone has to do it, or there's a three-acre minimum, or a five-acre minimum?
Right, and then I think the final question, which probably is a separate straw poll, is what usage should be allowed to entirely remove common open space in lieu of additional tree preservation?
So those first three, who would like to stay essentially as is, that everyone has to provide common open space?
As we do it currently.
I think I complicated it further. So everyone currently has, so, so the vote, I think, would be to, I think your proposed is.
Just eliminate the minimum acreage.
Eliminate the, right, so no three, five, no three or five, just everyone has, okay.
I think that's a very straightforward, simple way to do it. Okay? And the follow-up was?
Follow-up could be, so.
Who's allowed to do the 100% switch out? Right now, it's only industrial.
Yeah.
But Planning Director Stegall said that 50% swap is allowed on the others.
Yeah, so the language proposed allows basically every site to do at least 50% swap out, but industrial sites to completely remove open space in lieu of more tree preservation.
Are we all comfortable with that, the way it is sort of set? Okay. I think we are in good shape, everyone. Unless staff tells us otherwise.
The first vote was that every site needs to provide open space, so, okay. And, let's see, the other change proposed, I want to clarify, is that the, the more focused areas, is that still acceptable? Is that what you council would prefer? The gazebos, open areas?
I thought there was a question of possibly expanding the 100% replacement option to other types of development.
There was, there was that question. I don't know if that last vote handled that. So the last vote that I took was, every site could do 50% swap out, but industrial could do 100% swap out for trees. And I think your question is, should every use be allowed to swap out 100% of the open space in lieu of additional tree preservation?
Well, not every use, because to Michelle's point, if there are, you know, if there are shopping centers, et cetera, it's desirable to, excuse me, it's desirable to have them have some open space, but if there are other uses that, where that could be beneficial.
Okay.
That's kind of getting us in the weeds. I'm not sure how detailed or prescriptive we want to be. Right now, it seems kind of flexible. Mayor Protem Johnson?
So I, I was going to say, I think that what I would prefer right now is that we leave it with just the 100% replacement with the industrial use, and then give us all the opportunity, like I said before, I really would have to mull that, and I appreciate Planning Director's comments, because that, that's the first thing I thought of. I want, I, for many of the other uses, to have some common open space, so it might be, it might be good to leave it, and if, between now and two weeks, if we change our mind, we can change our mind in two weeks. I mean, the, the straw poll vote that we're doing right now is not, there's nothing binding. We can change our mind in two weeks.
Well, let me ask a clarifying question, actually. If, if a, if a site was planned, and they wanted to save trees in lieu of a common open space, would that be like a variance, or would that just be a hard no, if this is what we adopted?
If a site was, I'm, I'm thinking through that, that's a good question. I, I think a variance could be an option. I don't think it would get to the point where we have competing factors and, I'm trying to think through it as I, as I speak, but essentially, I think a development would have to be scoped to the size of what's required. So if a tree preservation is required, and this open space is required, the site would have to be down scaled. Do you have anything to add to that one?
I think you're pointing that pretty well. And I don't want to confuse the discussion too much, but another option might be 100% swap for everything, but for those commercial uses, maybe that's where there's a minimum acreage, that you have your large shopping center, they could only swap out to 50%. So maybe it's the 100% for all, but you hit three acres or five acres, then your maximum swap is 50. Just throwing that out there.
So, to close out on that one, maybe we can just do a quick straw poll, are we okay with as it is, and ask for some more examples for next time to just affirm that? Is everyone okay with that? Getting some head nods on that. Okay.
I mean, I just want to be clear that I'd be very much in favor of that last thing Chris said, where everyone is offered the, the 100% swap to, for trees instead of open space, but if you hit five acres or 10 acres or whatever it is, then you can only do 50%. I think that's a great way to handle it.
Okay, so if you guys can bring us back that option as well, that would be very helpful. And maybe some examples of what that would look like in practice.
Okay, so we covered the tree replacement, the common open space questions. Was there anything else that I think we needed to settle?
No.
The specific percentages, or the mixed use question, or anything else? Reading through my notes. I think that was essentially it. Is there any?
Okay, good. Frank, do we need a motion to leave the public hearing open, or is it just open? I know sometimes yes, sometimes no.
This is the public hearing tonight, right?
We opened it tonight.
So I guess if you don't close, we're going to.
Just going to stay open. Okay, sounds good. So the public hearing on the 9th, hopefully we'll be taking action on the 9th. You'll just bring us back a couple of small things, we'll affirm what the language you bring forth.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you.
Good discussion, thanks for working us.
Thank you.
On that. So now we're at item 10, action items. I just want to give Councilmember Rao a quick opportunity, if there's anything, conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest in anything on the agenda?
No conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now at item 10, action items. There are two action items on tonight's agenda, summer advisory committee appointment and the town center economic plan. Eric Smith, Town Clerk, will facilitate the first item. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, council. As most of you know, summer advisory committee recruitment began on June 8th with an application submission date of. began on June the 8th, with an application submission date of July the 18th at 5:00 p.m. On July 20th, council did receive their application packets and electronic ballots via email, and you were asked to return them to me via email by July 25th at 5:00 p.m. Fortunately, there were no battling issues that would require runoff battling, so I'm able to announce the results of council voting. Let's zoom in here. To the Environment and Stormwater Committee, Soraya Baradarajan. To the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee, Lalitha Burrell and Krishna Pakar. And once, and these first appointments, they have terms for two years, running from August 1st to July 31st, 2024. And the PZB is the only outlier there, where their appointments are going to run from September 1st to August 31st, 2024. Appointed to the PZB Planning and Zoning Board is David Caping, Capen, Josh Michael, and Kenneth Sack. To the Public Education Advisory Committee, Vidya Das Akasetti, Matthew Fell, Sarah Fuller, and Saham Hotkar. To the Public Safety Advisory Committee is Kayla McCann, and to the Senior Advisory Committee is Catherine Pikovic. As of July 31st, there's going to be five remaining vacancies on the public, on the Performance Measures Advisory Committee, and there are two remaining vacancies on the Public Education Advisory Committee. For the Public Education Advisory Committee, we're holding one of those positions to get a District III appointee. And, and the other one, just, we failed to get the, the needed votes for the appointment, so that one is open also. As there are currently no eligible applicants for MESS, and we don't have any eligible applicants for the Public Education District III, staff does recommend continued targeted recruitment for that District III appointment, and that open Performance Measures Advisory Committee appointment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to affirm these votes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0. And as we always like to say, thank you very much for volunteering to help out the town. Our advisory committees are very important, and we look forward to having even more applications, so we can fill them all up, so they can be even more effective. At this time, I'd like to recognize Martha Page, our Town Manager, who will facilitate the next item. And thank you, Town Clerk Smith. That was, it's always a little bit of herding the cats making that happen, so thank you very much.
Good evening, Town Council. I get the distinct honor of substituting in for Brandon tonight for what is a particularly joyous occasion perhaps for us. This is the item related to the endorsement of the development plan by the town center. I, we do have the SING development team here. I'm going to make the presentation. It really is more a quick overview and historical perspective of this project as you move forward. And then I'll recognize Avi and Money and the team if they want to make any comments, if that's okay with council. So we started this town center discussion in 2007 with the adoption of the town center plan way back then. And while it has changed, there were some things that were really still espoused in that plan that are, still exist today, which is really a vibrant, walking town center, a mix of uses, planned public investment that will attract private investment, recognizing our historical crossroads in that small-town feel, linking parts of our community through greenways, trails, sidewalks, and parks, and establishing those recreation and open spaces, including some we have there, such as the Western Wake Farmers Market. The current plan is really envisioned for a future 25 acres, and you'll see that that's outlined in the green. That's the full vision. We're talking about the development plan is really Phase 1 of that project, that would actually be built in two phases, a 1A, 1B, which is about 11 acres of that 25-acre parcel. We know where it is, but for the public, it is in the area up at our roundabout that is boarded by Jeremiah Street, Foxglove Drive, and the roundabout on Town Hall Drive. So what, very walkable from here, and where some of our other town hall amenities are. The first phase of the project is what is outlined in red, and just want to sort of take credit for council's vision and putting some things in place to make this happen, which started with that roundabout that provided access for our Wake County partner to come in and build the library, and the development of a regional or a, an area stormwater pond that serves this area and allows this development to happen. A public-private partnership is really important to catalyze this area while still leaving the town in control of the vision for what goes there. And those, that's why those public investments are so important to what is to come. It also leaves council, in that partnership relationship, with advocating for what you want to be here versus a more traditional, a developer comes in and builds what they want. So that's why the partnership is so important and allows us to be capturing the vision that you have versus what somebody else may have. The public-private partnership also allows us, again, I've mentioned, to control that process. Did I move? I'm getting confused here, hold on. Did I advance? There we go. So we've talked about not putting it out, and it allows us to provide things in a quicker and more efficient delivery of development, and the private developer will help us with the, providing those infrastructure pieces that are part of our public investment. It's important to recognize that we've had a partner in this for many years, Development Finance Initiative, with a school of government that has helped guided council and staff in learning and understanding and advocating for the best interest of the town. They advocate and represent us, but have been an integral part of the development team as the meetings have occurred, as we work together to bring this to you for consideration tonight. I mentioned it's been a long time. The RFP went out in November of 2020. We got three submittals, and we've been working with SING since the fall of 2021, when council approved an MOU that allowed us to begin those negotiations with the SING Development LLC as our preferred development partner. The goal for that first part of the process has been the concept, and that is what we're asking you to endorse tonight. It will drive the next major phase of this project, which is the Development Services Agreement, that puts all the very detailed, specific pieces of this big project together. This is the picture of the concept plan that council has talked about for the several past meetings. Again, just for, for purposes of this discussion, it is a mix of residential, park amenities, community amenities, retail, commercial, parking to serve the area, and it will build upon each other and the things that are already in place in this area. Important public components of this project, and that are integrated into the design in a way that matters to us, is the design and construction of the town green, plaza areas, the infrastructure and site work to support the development. And again, I mentioned, the integration of those in the area is, is really important. We're talking about an investment of a total of almost $75 million, of which 67 million is coming from the private investor. The town is estimated to put in about 10% of the, a 10 to 1 ratio of comparison, to leverage the dollars to maximize that private investment, while still getting those public investments that we're looking for in this project. I mentioned, there are various components. This is some of the private development, 230 apartments and 24 townhomes, a parking deck that will serve that apartment, but just as important, if not more important for us, public parking that will be dedicated for use for that retail and for the events that we envision would happen in those areas of town for events, festivals, et cetera. There's also retail space and commercial space. We need people there to activate this, and all of those components come together to do that. Just some more visuals, just to show, the town green is, is shown for you in, in both the bubbles and on the other side. We've integrated it with the existing farmers market, and even have future plans where they could expand their network as the farmers market would continue to grow. You see the cottage retail around there. Again, the, the whole design is to activate people using this area. This is just another picture of what the, the town green may look like, and it would have some capacity for audiences of 3,000, which is substantially more than we can host in any place in town now, in a variety of ways. One of those, as is, is talked about here, is in an amphitheater setting for concerts and performances in the community. We also will have some boutique retail. That's, that's not your big box stores. That's the mom and pop, that again, walkable, livable, unique, diverse, small businesses. Another goal that we have as a town is, is providing those opportunities for small businesses and places where, where people can go dine, shop, and visit, and again, activate this area as we envision it to be. I mentioned already that the design of this proposed town green aligns with the farmers' market rather than just replaces it, and it, if you, if you need some visuals, it's very much like Moore Square in Raleigh or in Durham Central Park. And then there is just road net, infrastructure network that has to come, and we have been purposeful in making sure there's connectivity to greenways, et cetera, but also for white, bock, excuse me, walkers, bikers, and people that are now using our smart shuttle and have a variety of ways to get in this area, not just by car. So the Development Services Agreement, which will follow, once you would endorse the concept plan, is, this is where all the detail works, and the SING team would continue to work primarily with Brandon and DFI, but to, to put together the structure of those details, and really now get into the, the very specifics of the site, the phasing of the plan, making sure all of the plating and the boundaries there, financing for both the SING team and for the town of Morrisville, any property transfers and any entitlements that would come back to you. In roughly six months, we've talked about a, a timeline. If council adopts tonight, aside from just regular updates, you could potentially expect to be seeing a Development Services Agreement this fall, roughly November is our projection. There's a whole site plan process, again, that we would be involved with as the town, working collaboratively with them, that would happen over the next six months from there, with a plan being ready, and a groundbreaking potentially in August of 2023. So about a year and then a couple years to complete that first phase. So we are on the precipice. We are asking you to endorse the development plan. It is the visual concept that we are working with to base all of those very specific, finite decisions. It will just continue the collaboration that has been strong so far. We will continue to come back with financial pro forma numbers as they are formed up. Many details will continue to get addressed through this process, many of them which we've already talked about, and that we would be bringing you updates and, and work sessions on the progress. I'm happy to answer any questions. First, I'll ask Avi if he wants to come up and make any comments. Avi's, Avi just wants a yea. Would that be accurate?
Oh, Brandon's not here.
We're all bummed Brandon's not here.
We'd like Martha here.
Well, I'm, I'm sure I've not been as smooth as Brandon, and it would, it would be inappropriate for me not to recognize how much blood, sweat, and tears he has put in that, as well as Eric Thomas, who is not here tonight, and our, our team here. I can honestly say, this is the most excited I have been about the town center project since I started the job. So I'm asking you to please endorse this concept plan, and I'll answer any questions you have.
I don't think we have any questions. Some people might want to make some comments. I'll start with Mayor Pretam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rabadi.
So I'm going to take Avi's lead, and I'm going to say, I want this done as soon as possible, too. I don't need to go on and on. It's been 20-plus years in the making, and I'm with you, Town Manager Page. I, I am ready for this to keep moving. So I want to thank Money and, and Avi and the whole SING team. And I'll make a motion when we're ready.
This is real. This is real now.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Oh, I just wanted to know if it was time to make a motion.
We'll come back to you, too. Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff, the development partners, SING Development, and engaged citizens of Morrisville who weighed on this plan, and looking forward to vote on this. I mean, I always say that one of the best votes ever made was making Martha Page the Town Manager, and I think this might go up there as actually voting on a plan. So you might have competition on my best vote.
All right, I'll take it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella?
No, I, I think I echo everyone's sentiment. It was a very good project, a lot of negotiations, and it was not an easy, like, for Money and Avi, that we had to go through, but overall, I think I'm very excited how this whole thing is shaping up. I'm still waiting for the, the wow factor of a waterfall or something.
Ten of course.
Okay. So is there a motion, second, to adopt Resolution 2022-280-0?
I would love to make that motion.
Liz would be a good first.
Can she do it in second?
And I am going to read the whole thing, because this motion means so much to me, and I know it means a lot to everyone. And I'm going to say one more thing. I don't know how many times, I know you all have done this, because I've done it, how many times you've been on vacation somewhere, and you've been in a downtown or in an area that is absolutely beautiful, and you stop and you think, boy, somebody all those years ago was so smart to start this project, because here it is today, and how beautiful and wonderful it is. And I really, and I mean this sincerely, oh, I can hear myself getting emotional, too. I hope one day folks look back at this council, at this moment, at this staff, and remembers this moment, because it's going to be meaningful to the town of Morrisville. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-280-0 of the Morrisville Town Council endorsing a development plan with SING Development LLC for the Town Center Core Demonstration Project.
Second.
I'd like to second that motion, and also to say that I didn't get to vote Martha in, so this is my proudest moment yet as a town council member.
Can, can we have two people seconding something, or?
We'll, we'll take, we'll take it.
So Councilmember Garamella and Councilmember Rabadi, please, on the second. All those, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you all.
So I'll say thank you and congratulations. I think that's warranted. Last comment from staff is we recognize there's still years before something's going to be there. We, we've, we've taken it upon ourselves, along with the SING team, to make sure that we develop some communication collateral materials and strategies to keep this in front of not only you, but the, the, the community aware of what's really going on, so that that excitement remains and is generated. So we are working on doing some more creative things for this particular project.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you all for being here, and thank you, staff, everyone who worked on this. And now we have 15 minutes with, to celebrate, because we're going to go on a break. So let's go ahead and reconvene at 7:49. Town Manager Page, ready to rebegin? Okay. Going to bring us back into session. There is one new item on tonight's agenda, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Baker Residential, establishing a- understanding with Baker Residential, establishing a land dedication and greenway payment in lieu for the park at Town Center. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will facilitate the item. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening again, council. So this item is a bit different than what council usually hears, and there's a few kind of moving pieces to the puzzle, but, and I'll try to explain them all, but essentially this is a memorandum of understanding to formalize an agreement with the town and Baker Residential, the group that's developing a neighborhood known as the Park at Town Center. So let me just start by reviewing the proposed development, its location, and other factors about the proposed development. So it's named the Park at Town Center. It is not a park. It is a townhome development on Church Street. It is 41 single-family attached units, proposed on 13 and a half acres. It is located where the Orchard Trail greenhouses were located. I think they're still there, being removed, but right on Church Street, near its intersection with Jeremiah and the Myers Point Development. So 41 units on 13 and a half acres, that is roughly three units per acre, and that's important, and I'll come back to that. And the last fact is that the property is in total 13 and a half acres, but fairly large portions of it are in flood zones. Some is in the floodway, which is the most restrictive flood zone, and that leads to a decent size of this land being either unbuiltable for commercial purposes or requiring significant amounts of environmental permitting and mitigation for it to be built on. So the next few slides just show its location, just to familiarize yourself with it. The subject properties are outlined in red. There are three total parcels. The bottom left-hand corner is a locational map zoomed out for better reference. But again, right on Church Street, near Jeremiah, near Myers Point Drive. Next slide is the same scale aerial. It's, this shows the floodplain and the extent of the floodplain, and then the blue area is the current floodway. Again, subject properties outlined in red. And then, again, same scale, but this is taken from the submitted site plan, and it shows generally what the development is proposed to look like. So similar to the Myers Point Development, it has townhomes that are focused along Church Street with a road coming behind it and some alley-fed units closer to Church Street. So let's keep going. So let's review some town requirements that are placed on the development, and this will kind of lead into why this MOU is before you tonight and kind of where this all comes from. So general UDO requirements are placed on this neighborhood, typical UDO requirements based, placed on any single-family attached neighborhood. This includes tree preservation, landscaping, setbacks, height maximums, parking, other factors like that. Residential neighborhoods are also required to either dedicate public recreation area or submit a payment in lieu of dedication. So this site would be required to dedicate either 1.17 acres or submit a payment in lieu amount of $98,000. This specific zoning district is the Town Center Residential Zoning District. So there are several Town Center zoning districts that are currently in place in the UDO and on the zoning map. These were installed that surrounding the, what at one time was the future Town Center, and the, one of the main intents of them was to provide walkability and to provide a certain density of housing within a walkable distance to the future Town Center. So this site is very close to the presentation Town Council just saw, within walking distance to Town Center. So what that leads to is the town has mandated a certain number of dwelling units per acre, specifically between six and eight dwelling units per acre. So there's a minimum. Most of the Town Zone Districts do not have a minimum density, but that minimum came from having walkability, having people located near the Town Center, and having developments that met maybe what was, what's considered an appropriate density near the Town Center. And so this development is required to meet that minimum six dwellings per acre. But as I said earlier, with the amount of acreage, it only can meet three dwelling units per acre, and I'll get into that a little bit later, more in the presentation. So other requirements the town places on this development, just like other ones. So there's the UDO that developments have to meet. There's also the transportation plan. In this case, the transportation plan requires some widening of Church Street, sidewalk construction, addition of curb and gutter, and some right-of-way dedication, basically to enlarge Church Street. The transportation plan also covers greenways, and you can see in the bottom left-hand corner that this site has been identified as an appropriate location for a greenway. The other, the, what am I trying to say? So in this image, green is where the greenway is supposed to go, and if you can see, there's actually a blue dash line. That's what's called a greenway connector. So every development has to connect somehow to a greenway that's adjacent to it, but the transportation plan also identifies locations where it's appropriate for the greenway to connect back to a major road such as Church Street. So this development will also construct that. So let me cover some, just notable items, again, trying to tell the story of how this, how I'm standing here before tonight with this presentation. So again, this, the development has three dwelling units per acre, but the town's ordinance requires six to eight dwelling units per acre for the zoning district. Also on this parcel, the town has identified in the town's stormwater plan, this area is an area of concern, as it is unstable with a high bank erosion. So if we think about a flood zone and flood area, that is where the water drains to in the surrounding area. That's where the earth has kind of designed itself to drain to that area. This is one of the areas in town that Stormwater Division has identified, maybe needs some work to help that drainage or to help the water quality or something like that. The stormwater master plan was attachment two in your agenda item. It shows generally what the plan would be if the town were to acquire this land and acquire the grant funding to execute the project. And I also happen to note that Stormwater staff is here if you have specific questions about this project and its intent, its future intent. The area that I identified earlier that's in the flood area, it drains about 382 acres of upstream land. A lot of this is along Church Street. And finally, the stormwater plan recommends a future project to realign the existing stream and basically construct, construct wetlands to help manage that water. So, so, let me keep going, sorry. Additional items regarding this neighborhood, this development, is that there have, there have been, there's been discovered that basically there's overlapping property lines along town-owned property, along Page Street, and then the subject property. And this was ultimately discovered during work on the Historic Christian Church when the town was going about final plating some of the property. And essentially, all this means is that, you know, before advanced computers and mapping technology, surveyors were not quite as clear on where the property lines were. The most recent deed that I've found in this area, and I'll show you where it is on a later slide, was from 1947, and basically, the legal records show that multiple owners, there are multiple owners of the same property. So with, if this development dedicates land to the town, essentially, the town would own both sides of the property line, and thus it would be a lot more easy to clear up that legal dispute of who owns the, who owns the property. So, I'm not sure I necessarily touch on this, but this development is proposing to dedicate about six and a half acres to the town of Parkland Dedication. So only required to do a little over one acre, but they're proposing six and a half acres. So if you see the image on your slide here, I've circled where the overlapping properties' boundaries go. The town owns the properties where I've written "town-owned properties" in the white italics. This is the Historic Christian Church. This is another older structure the town owns, and this is Page Street that wraps around and comes back out to Morrisville Carpenter. And so with a property dedication from this development, the town would own this area as well as these to help eliminate that disputed property. I say disputed, there's not a true dispute, but it is, it's unclear, I guess is a better way to describe it, who owns that property. So let me, let me jump to the details of the agreement as proposed, and that was all really set up before, and kind of before I get into it, I'll just say that, you know, town staff has brought this before you tonight because we think it's a win-win deal, both for the town and the developer. So let me go into some of the details. So essentially, I've kind of set this up, but Baker Residential is interested in developing the neighborhood called the Park at Town Center. And as a part of that, they have to meet the town's zoning standards of six to eight dwelling units per acre. Well, with the way the property is set up now, they can't meet that due to the amount of flood zone on the property. So instead of dedicating the 1.17 acres that would be required, they are proposing to dedicate basically six and a half acres to the town. And this would allow the development to move forward without them seeking a variance or some other kind of approval from the town. They would also, Baker Residential would also pay a payment in lieu for a greenway and 100% of the estimated cost, and town staff has estimated and agreed with Baker Residential's estimate that the cost would be $230,000. The number on your screen is what the number that will be given to the town. And then Baker Residential would cover any property transfer costs. So let me jump to the next slide. So this would be ultimately the, essentially, if the MOU was executed and agreed to, the property was developed, this would be the anticipated final results. And I'll just kind of go over it a little bit. So the neighborhood's along the front, focused on Church Street. There's a greenway connector running along the southern side of the property, back into the greenway area. The area in orange would be dedicated to the town for ownership, for permanent ownership. This blue area down here is already owned by the town, so the town would have the land connected to it. It would also be connected to Page Street. And then the greenway would ultimately be built using that payment in lieu, and I've continued the greenway on a separate property because this neighborhood submitted a payment in lieu also. So why is this in the town's interest at all? Why is a payment in lieu being submitted instead of a greenway being constructed? Essentially, the stormwater project would realign a stream that runs along this back area, and if the project were to move forward, if the greenway were to be built now, then the project be moved forward, the greenway would have to be essentially, large parts of it either destroyed and moved or rebuilt. Town staff find that a PIL is more appropriate to kind of come in after the stormwater project is constructed. The town gets ownership of all this property, and it clears up some unclear property lines and just allows town permanent control over this area. So town staff recommends approval for a few of the following reasons. So the agreement allows the town to acquire this land for a proposed future stormwater project at no upfront cost to the town. It allows the town to settle a property boundary dispute in a fairly easy, straightforward manner, and the key bullet point here I want to hit is number three, which is, this MOU is not, is not going to, let's say, stop or proceed the development. The development has to meet the town's zoning standards of six to eight dwelling units per acre. It could, the developer could apply for a variance. One of the variance standards is environmental features, which restrict, you know, development that can normally happen. So I guess the point I want to say is that this agreement is necessarily stopping or preventing or pushing the development forward. It is just an agreement for, that aligned up with a few of the UDO standards that seemed to make sense as it was developed. So this agreement is really memorializing what was proposed, and essentially, the UDO is still being met in every way. So let me read what else my notes here. So representatives of Baker Residential are here if you'd like to ask them any questions. Also have some Stormwater staff, and if I was unclear on anything, I'd be happy to try to explain further. There is no public hearing involved with this process. Staff has scheduled a brief tonight and follow-up and a potential vote at your next meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Chris. It's a good presentation. My first question is the lessons learned from International Drive. Like you said, this has a lot of issues with environmental issues, right? And when you're taking right-of-way, like our basically PIL, $230,000, what are the mitigation environmental fees which are associated with that? Because for me, that is the key, because we did not factor. Does this cost include those costs, too? Because we don't want to get into that, what we already went through.
Sure, and that's an excellent point, and I'll say that the biggest difference, and Catherine, if you want to jump in, feel free, but the biggest difference between this one and International Drive is that International Drive had environmental features which town staff at that time did not suspect or did not prepare for. In this case, the number, the $230,000 number was prepared with town Stormwater staff reviewing it, knowing that they hoped to build the greenway after doing a stormwater project to really align the environmental hazard areas. So those things have been taken into account. There's also, within the payment in lieu, there's been, some of those environmental permitting things were taken into account, which is kind of why that number is as high as it is. I guess we're not, the way that number ended up where it is.
So bottom line, if you're saying it is factored in, then I'm okay. If it is not, then I would ask to go back and sharpen your pencils to see what is the exact amount, instead of, you know, we come back and pick the tab on that.
Right.
And the other thing is, what is the future walkway this is going, or is it just an orphan? Where does it connect to? Because I've seen that at one point of time it is, but I don't know where it's really connecting, and it's not like a, like an orphan one somewhere.
Yeah, excellent question. This, I think this is the Saw Creek Mill, Sawmill Creek?
Sawmill.
Okay. It's, so, so it's got, it's in a T pattern on this slide. Essentially, it starts at Church Street, feeds into the future Town Center, and then runs north-south along the back of these developments, between the railroad tracks and these developments. So on the southern part, to be honest, I'm not sure exactly where it ends. You eventually run into Morrisville Carpenter Road, Old Fire Station 1, Page Street. But the northern part is in the town plans to extend all the way up to McCrimmon, to cross over McCrimmon somewhere in the future TOD area and connect back around the entrances Church Street Park. So it's supposed to be, so the greenway kind of behind y'all that runs all the way up to Church Street Park, this is supposed to kind of match that along Church Street.
And the last is, if a person wanted to walk, where would a public park here? Because this is all residential, and there's no kind of access to park and walk. I'm thinking like the Christian Church is the closest where a future state, you know, park there and walk from there, but I just thought something that you can think of for future state.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, so what happened? Did the person buy this land not realizing that there was a floodplain there, or what happened?
Hi, and the developer is here to address some of those questions. I can say from his staff's perspective, I think when we were first approached, I'm trying to remember back, they knew there was a floodway here or flood zone, but they were looking to use the more, I guess, usable parts of the property. I think when we first approached, it was, I can't remember exactly, but I think they were aware that it was there. I just think they didn't necessarily intend on using that part of the property, you know, specifically for any necessary purpose. And through our discussions with them and working with our other departments, so initially, you know, planning department is usually the one talking to developers. And in talking with other departments, like Stormwater, realized that this is actually identified on the Stormwater Master Plan, seemed like a piece of property the town may be interested in, and without the developer necessarily having to apply for a variance, the town could acquire this land, still get the greenway built, still allow a development that matches the town standards, and it just kind of came together like that.
Okay, so let me just make sure that I entirely understand what's going on here, because I've read this eight times and I'm still not exactly sure. So, okay. So the developer owns this entire parcel of land, but they only ever intended to build these townhouses that are shown in this picture. So in order, so they're giving us this amount of land, which decreases the size of their parcel, which means that these townhouses- parcel, which means that these townhouses are now sufficient to meet the UDO standard because it's a smaller piece of property with the same amount of townhouses on it, right?
The, so, yes and no. So yes, so essentially if the UDO was applied, kind of as it's written right now, with the entire property, I believe they would have been required to a minimum of many more townhomes. With the reduction, they are now meeting the six to eight dwelling units per acre for that specific, that specific piece of property after the land is transferred to the town.
Okay, so we don't want a lot more townhouses on there anyway, and anyway, there's nowhere to build them, right? Because there's a floodplain.
Right, there is floodplain. Yeah, so there's floodplain all, basically the land, almost entirety of the land given to the town is floodplain, which is partly why the stormwater master plan has identified this for that project. And again, I would say that, you're correct that it's, if this agreement moves forward, we are, the town has simplified the process for allowing this development to move forward. But again, it checks off a lot of boxes for a variance to allow the development to move forward, even without the land dedication. And so the way I would, there are a lot of moving parts. It is, it's somewhat kind of all replaced. But the way I frame this in my mind at the end is, if the town is moving forward with the stormwater master plan and, you know, wants to move forward with this project, which I believe is under review by stormwater to move forward in the next few years, this is a way to get this land, acquire this land, acquire this land at no cost to the town, to have permanent control over it, to still have the greenway built soon, and to allow the development to move forward.
Okay, and we'll own the land. This place and this thing in orange, that's going to be our land now.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Councilmember Fender, followed by myself.
I just have one quick question on a, well, do you have, can you show where the existing greenway is in Myers Point? Do you have a satellite view of that?
I can, I can find, so I'll say for Myers Point, the greenway, I'm not sure, so the greenway was not built with Myers Point. The greenway was accepted as a payment in lieu. Not sure how that decision was made, but that's where we're at. So if you see the green line, it actually extends north of this, the orange property that the town would acquire. I'm not the one designing this project, don't want to overspeak, but in my mind, the town could use the money from Myers Point, along with the money from this development, and just continue it all the way through.
Okay, I thought there was, must be the other town.
Yeah, Hampton Place has the greenway.
All right, thank you.
I guess I need a little bit of an up review of the difference between a floodway and a floodplain. If you could do that first, your name and role for the record.
Yeah, I'm Catherine Jacobs. I'm the town stormwater engineer. And this is a good question. Basically, a floodplain is, well, we delegate the 100-year floodplain, and it is the 1% chance that a certain-sized storm will happen in any given year. Basically, it means that it's going to flood pretty often. A floodway is where the water usually will always be, and it is extremely difficult to build in a floodway. It costs a lot of money. For the, your question, that was actually, a no-rise study was incorporated in the payment in lieu, so that, again, is why it was so high. But yeah, we don't ever recommend building in a floodway, but doing a project like what we want to do in this area is a little more doable, but it will still require a lot of those permitting and studies and stuff like that. But, did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So floodway is pretty much an existing stream that gets bigger, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, it's basically a no-touch zone.
Okay. So, in the transportation master plan, if someone, if there's a greenway shown, the developer has to build it. Can you explain to me why a stormwater master plan doesn't have that same requirement for a future stormwater, best practice on that space?
Well, so the mass, the project isn't really a stormwater control, I mean, it will be kind of a stormwater control measure. They do have their own SEM on their site that they are required to build, but I don't think that we can requ, yeah, I'm not sure why we can't require, but it, I guess because it's more of a town project, it's taking on hundreds of acres. I think you had the number on your slide.
Yeah, and then I could, I could maybe help out a little bit with this. So I would say the stormwater master plan is a town plan for future projects that are identified, almost like a capital improvements program or a future land use plan. It's a guiding document for something the town should do, whereas the UDO and the transportation plan are legally binding requirements that a developer must do. And so for the stormwater, the stormwater project that's proposed in this area would take on water from a number of properties in the surrounding area, which the development would not be liable for. Generally, I would say that for requirements of development, the town can require things that that development will kind of produce. We can ask them to mitigate that, but we can't generally require a development to take on, to fix a stormwater project that's a large part of the town's issue. That's the way I would describe that.
And where are we on the process of actually executing that stormwater utility on this site? Because I would feel a lot more comfortable if that was done and then they built the greenway, because I do not want our residents and taxpayers to be holding the bag again. That's my really big concern with where this is going.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, we have not started the process, but it is, this is a really cool project, so as far as stormwater is concerned, we would love to see it in the next couple of years. But, you know, it comes with a cost and we have to start the process. We have a couple that are before this one, if that helps, a couple culverts and stuff like that.
So, there's just a lot of uncertainty moving forward, and we're getting a little bit of money now, but I think we found in general that the money isn't going to cover what we need moving forward. I would understand why the developer would want to essentially pass off this liability, but I don't think it's something that I'd be comfortable as a town assuming. And the area of unclear boundaries doesn't really concern me. That's something the engineers and lawyers can work out. There's not a lot of value in making that go away. I guess I would much prefer them build the greenway. And if we can know where the stormwater utility is going to be, and they can make it so it's going to be in the final state, like when someone's going to be building a sidewalk in front of their development, but the white roads can be wider later, they know where it needs to go. So if there's a way that we can do this and have it done now, because it's really going to be useful in that it will be attached to Church Street, so this isn't going to be an orphan part of the greenway, this will be a usable part of the greenway, which will be nice. So that's some of my concerns now, that this is, just like the Wake Tech property, I'm sorry, Wake County property at Church Street, why would we want it if we're not going to do anything with it, essentially? And I know we might have to acquire it in order to build this stormwater, but I'm not convinced that that's a good deal for the town.
And Mayor, I would like to make just kind of two points. And Eric, could I pull up one of the attachments? I never know if I should back out or not. So first one is attachment to stormwater master plan. Where's that one? And then, so first thing, and Catherine, if you wouldn't mind maybe describing a little more, what's the need, why it's there? But this is the, this is the image from the stormwater master plan, which shows kind of the level of intensity that the stormwater project would take. So it, I guess kind of a layman's way to describe it, it'd just be very difficult to build the greenway either around it or, you know, before the project was going to move forward. And that's partly why the reason we're here tonight. And Catherine, let me, I'll let you explain a little more, but the other thing I was going to say is that the International Drive thing, the final number is still being determined, and I think we want to report that back to council when it's finally determined, but the payment in lieu for International Drive, which is, was a fairly large road, was $354,000. And, you know, that number could escalate certainly, but kind of to compare it, this is a greenway that, you know, town staff's been in negotiation with the development team, and they're submitting $230,000. So, I will say, the International Drive definitely is a warning to kind of, at least myself and other staff, but, you know, town stormwater staff, your town engineer felt that that $230,000 figure, which raised when we worked with the development team, over and over raised up to 230, that that is, that is an appropriate number for this, particularly if it can be coupled with the stormwater project and added on the end of that project, not just a fresh new development. But again, I understand the concern, and it definitely was. And if it's okay, Catherine, do you have any way to describe what's the need, why are we doing this? Is it stormwater quality? Is it quantity? Is there flooding?
It's kind of all of it. You know, back in, I think StanTech did this original content, concept back in 2014. They had identified this area of stream as having really high erosion on their banks. It's very unstable. They have extremely high velocity in some of these areas, because I think as Chris's slide showed, it takes on a very large drainage area. And a lot of that drainage area is also grandfathered in to where they don't have any stormwater control measures at all. So this would drastically improve the water quality downstream with all the pocket wetlands. So basically, we would, at the property line, take on where the stream currently is, and then it kind of, the long continuous blue strip is where the stream would be realigned, so that there are very few straight paths that would slow the water down, help with the erosion, and help stabilize the banks a little bit better. And then the areas on the outside with the green and the little pockets of blue, those are pocket wetlands, they're constructed wetlands that we would put in there, and they help with the water quality. They would essentially be little miniature BMPs throughout the stretch of the restoration. We're calling it a stream restoration, but it's really a kind of a realignment with, you know, coupling it with the wetlands.
Which only heightens my concerns of all the uncertainty and all the work that has to be done. You're talking about high erosion. I don't think the greenway should be built until it's a stable area.
Right, and I think what Chris was, yeah.
I think we're putting the cart before the horse by trying to make this happen.
Yeah, and we were always, we would propose, like he said, that the greenway go in after the stabilization had already occurred. We think that the stormwater measure should go first, and then the greenway come second. It can be, you know, I think you said, kind of tacked on there at the end and almost be considered to one project.
Yeah, and Mayor, I understand your concerns, and I'll describe it kind of like this, is that it's not perfect timing. Clearly, we want the stormwater project done, then a developer to privately come in and build it all for the town. But in this case, that's just not the timing that's confronted, at least staff and now as a town. But what staff has done when working with this developer is, we've tried to make a best of both worlds, it's not a perfect situation. It benefit both the developer and the town. The stormwater project is probably still a few years off, but just, the proposal presented tonight is just kind of the best situation we've made it at the end. We feel it's a fair deal to both sides. But again, you're right, it's not a perfect scenario, but I will say that $230,000 number was not the first number the developer proposed, and staff has certainly taken that, you know, a very serious look at that, particularly in light of the international drive development agreement. And that's the, kind of the best I have to offer tonight.
So that 230 is 100% of current costs?
Yeah.
And we're talking about a couple of years down the road.
I'll say the Myers Point payment in lieu for a greenway, which is directly north of this. Now, it's not all in a flood zone, so it's a little different, was $47,000. So, that was back in, when was Myers Point submitted? 2016? So there have been quite a few escalations of cost that have taken into this. Now, certainly, I can't stand here and say that's exactly going to cost $230,000. It might cost less, it might cost more. But I'll say that town engineering staff has taken a good look into it, and we have, there's been a number of meetings, which may have been frustrating to both, you know, staff and the developer, which has changed that number, and it has ultimately reached this point of $230,000.
Is there any way to require them to build it later, rather than accepting PIL now? Because I'm very concerned that that 230 isn't going to be nearly enough.
I don't, sorry, I'm thinking again as I speak here. So, this will be an administrative approval, so once the town engineer, the town planning director, other staff stamp approved, the plan's approved, and the developer can build. When we get into, there's been other situations where we get into kind of asking developers to build things later, delay the build. That's where it gets into a hard time of, how do we, how do we manage that? How do we go back about that? Is that truly a requirement we, in a power the town has if a plan's approved? I also say, the land dedication itself is a part of disagreement. So clearly, the developer's buying the land, they're spending money on it. I had the Wake County tax assessor assesses it $84,000 an acre. Now, is that land maybe valuable in a traditional sense of being able to build more townhomes on it? Maybe not. But that is, that is part of the reason why those numbers have adjusted, and staff felt that it was fair not to require 150% on this land that the town, that the developer's giving the town, and able to do maybe this project, maybe future projects after the stormwater, projects finished. As Catherine said, the stream's going to be realigned, maybe that floodplain kind of shifts at some point. But, no, I think the answer, sorry, my long answer short is that at this time, it either needs to be the developer builds it now, or we accept, the town accepts a payment in lieu.
Okay, and if we were to expect, accept the land, we wouldn't, it would come off the tax rolls as well. So we would lose that revenue.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, so also concerned about that. It seems like a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. This is a bird in the hand worth less than a bird in the bush, is my opinion. It's just, it's not good now, it's not going to be any better later. So I've shared my concerns, and I appreciate staff answering all my questions. I'll recognize Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So, not that this is exactly the same, but this really reminds me of the development approval for the Morseville Square Shopping Center. Again, not, all the situation's not all equal here, but the back part of that property was all wetland. And the developer, we worked with the, well, the owner, who's the current, still the current owner, worked with Dan DeZamba, and he donated the back portion of the property. And he donated that property, probably, and I'm going to, I'm looking around to see if anybody's here would remember, but it was in the early 2000s. And it may have, actually, I'm not sure I was even a part of that approval, so it may have been the late 1990s. And then it took another 10 years before we did anything with that property. And that property now, it was crucial for the Crabtree Hatcher Greenway Network back there. And I will tell you, it is beautiful back there. I walk out there practically every Saturday morning, and then several days during the week as well. And it is a, it is a well-used and well-loved greenway. And I will tell you, the, just the few chairs we have out there, or the benches that we have out there are not enough. I need to put a plug in. We need to put more benches out there, because you can sit out there and watch the wildlife and really take your time. And I have seen people do that. I've done it myself, and I've seen families do that. So, this reminds me of that a lot, and that this is, or could be, an amenity for our residents, and could be that really unique greenway that goes through wetland that folks can take advantage of. And when Councilmember Garamella talked about, you know, the parking situation, I love the fact, where you talked about the straightening out who owns what property and all that, that, right in that intersection down there, we do have property with a parking lot, and if we did a greenway connection, that would be, that would be really easy to have a place for the public that does not live here to be able to park and walk the greenway. So, I think you have come up with a really good win-win for all of us, and I really appreciate that, the effort that our staff went. that, the effort that our staff went into. And, um, and this talk about, you know, building the Greenway first and then, um, you know, doing the stormwater project later, I'm not in favor of that. Um, I've seen too many things where, um, we as a town are left with that whole project in the end where it is our cost to rip something up and then to go ahead with a project and then have to pay to put in a new, um, pavement. So it actually costs us more. And oh, by the way, um, prices are always going up and we know that. That's why you're asking for so much in, um, for the, in lieu of the dedication for, or the, the building of the Greenways. So, um, I appreciate the effort that went into this. I do think this could be, um, really good, uh, for, for our residents, especially those that live right here in this area. And so I, I do have a question too, after I've said all that. Um, so the Greenway that, um, would exist on this property plus the Greenway to the north, do we have any idea how long, um, once we were, are able to start building this Greenway, how, how, how many, how many, um, I was going to say miles, I'm not sure if it would be miles, how many miles of Greenway would it be? Do we have any clue?
So if we could, if the town could, let me see. This property itself would be about 1,300 feet. If it was connected to Myers Point, that would be about a third of a mile. And then there's a gap with an, it's a, another landscape supply company. And then there's the next neighborhood which has built the Greenway, which is connected. Um, so about, about, about a third of a mile, I'd say for this site.
For just this, but then it would, it potentially, if we got that gap, connect with the other Greenway. Okay. But eventually in time, in time, it would, it would go the whole, and you already said this, Chris, it would run parallel to Church Street. So folks would not have to walk on Church Street that have a, a safer, um, well-off-the-street, um, whole connected Greenway system to walk on. Which, uh, again, I'm not, I'm not naive. I know we're, this is not going to happen overnight and it, it's going to take years. But we've got to start somewhere and we've got to get, um, you know, this, these, these, these projects that we're talking about and these MOUs that we talk about and the, the partnerships we talk about, these are all the steps to get to that final result that we all want. So, um, I appreciate that. That's all the comments I have right now.
Okay. We've all had a chance to speak if we wished, so we're going to do a second round for those who wish. Uh, Councilmember Caramella?
Yeah. I, I hear your concerns, TJ, but for me, the way I look at it is we are potentially getting one more Crabtree Nature Park with, you know, kind of, uh, land because that's also on floodplains and the areas and it's a dedication that we are getting. And, um, wanted to ask the stormwater engineer, is the water coming north from like north to south? Is the flow?
Yes.
And, and keeping in mind all the, like Iron Mountain and all those lands that will be eventually developed, the flow will be more, you know, stronger, the currents of the water and especially, um, if you go back to that, uh, attachment that you showed. Right now, this is, this is the, this is how we are planning to do it, like make it curly, like, and, and, but right now it is straight, right? So, so this, you're pretty much deciding how the stream should go in the way we want and then pretty much, you know, a sidewalk can be built on top of it. So I don't think there's any uncertainty because they are pretty much determining how the stream would be taking and basically bringing down the flow of the water. For me, it's like a, a win-win. I would not always look at, yes, we knew going in to this that, uh, this land would not be able to use by the developer either way because it was a floodplain, it doesn't matter who bought it. Um, and I think it's a, it's a good win-win for us.
Any other questions for staff or for the applicant who's here? Okay. We are scheduled to vote on this at our next meeting on August 9th. Thank you very much, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting together this option.
Thank you.
We're now at item 12, Future Meetings, Events and Citizen Involvement Opportunities. There is a lot going on in Morrisville coming up soon. The community is invited to the Fire Station Number Three Groundbreaking Ceremony tomorrow at 10:00 AM. It's located at 1021 Harris Mill Road. The event includes speakers and a ceremonial groundbreaking. Parking will be available onsite at Harris Mill Road and at Town Hall Commons Building Three, parking lot at 101 J Morris Commons Lane. Every Saturday morning from 8:00 AM till 12:00 noon, the Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food, goods and live music from small and local businesses. I heard a group of accordion players there last week and it was pretty cool, even though the temperature was really hot. There are a lot of new vendors, so if you have not been there for a while, come by and I definitely recommend a visit. The peaches are very tasty. The Town of Morrisville Temporary Disc Golf Course continues to be open for play at Cedar Fork District Park. That's on Aviation Parkway through Friday, August 5th. Our Pop-Up Dog Park will be open at Morrisville Community Park on Friday, August 5th and Friday, August 19th from 4:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Pre-registration is required and can be found on our website or by, by typing POP in the search bar. Our Summer in the Park Music Series continues. Big Chief will play at the Healthy Food Hub, 280 Town Hall Drive on July 22nd at 6:30 PM. Big Chief is known for playing music for all ages and their set list ranges from authentic New Orleans music to older country and rock, classic music from the 1950s and children's songs. And actually, um, that's carried over. We've already done that. Apologies. But this, on Friday, August 5th, Grass Street will perform at the Music in the Park Series at the Healthy Food Hub from 6:30 to 8:30. Grass Street is, uh, based in central North Carolina and plays a mix of original material and bluegrass standards. They also cover songs from genres ranging from rock to blues to jazz, setting them apart from the average bluegrass band. They pride themselves on offering an entertaining and high-energy stage show with the right balance of musical precision and humor. The concerts are free and a food truck will be onsite. Feel free to bring a blanket or chair, get comfortable on the lawn. Morrisville residents are invited to take part in National S'mores Day in S'moresville on Wednesday, August 10th. The town will change its name to S'moresville for the day and will be serving up these beloved treats from 6 until 7:30 PM at Morrisville Community Park. That's 1520 Morrisville Parkway. Residents are also invited to create a short video of one minute or less, sharing a fond memory related to s'mores and upload it to the social media. Use the hashtag S'moresville and tag the Town of Morrisville on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube or LinkedIn. August will have the first cohort of Morrisville entrepreneurs navigating the newly-formed Business Startup Support Class Launch Morrisville, a collaboration of Wake Tech, the Morrisville Chamber and others to support Morrisville residents or those with businesses in Morrisville. Applications are being accepted now, so please visit www.launchmorrisville.org for more info. And perhaps the most important ongoing item is the 2022 Morrisville Community Survey. It is now open for all residents. Please help us shape the future of Morrisville. Your participation in this survey is very important as your feedback will help Morrisville make decisions that affect our all-America city. Your responses are confidential and no identifying information will be shared. See our social media or visit the town website to share your thoughts. As always, for a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. At this time, we're at Council and Manager Comments. At first, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender followed by Councilmember Rao.
I have no comments.
Councilmember Rao followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson.
Have her go first, I guess something's stuck in my throat.
Could not hear you.
I guess something's stuck in my throat.
Okay. We will circle back to you, sir. Uh, Mayor Pretem Johnson followed by Councilmember Caramella.
So I just have, uh, two comments tonight. One is, uh, the Morrisville Community Fund, which is a nonprofit, uh, with a board of directors made up of Morrisville residents, um, and business and, um, faith-based persons. Um, our board is looking, uh, toward our 2022 grants this year and our application period is open right now. So, um, we are looking for nonprofits that serve Morrisville families. And, um, for instance, in the past, we have awarded grants to, um, Kirin, to Interact, to our Firefighters Explorer Program, to our CERT Committee. The application period is open now for nonprofits, again, that serve Morrisville families. So, um, if you are interested, if you are a nonprofit, if you are on a board of a nonprofit, um, please reach out to me or to, uh, Councilmember Robati. We are both on the Morrisville Community Fund Board of Directors and, uh, the clock is ticking. So, um, please, um, reach out and apply for our 2022 grant application period. And then the only other comment I want to make, um, is to, um, Town Manager, to, to extend my thanks to the Morrisville Police Department. They have done an outstanding job, um, in the, in recent, uh, days and weeks of, um, I don't, I don't want, you know, going out and doing speeding, um, and I'm going to use the wrong word, I was going to use a word that I don't want to use, but out there, um, doing DWI checks, speeding checks, um, and, you know, I, and you all know, I live off Morrisville Parkway and I hear, I hear the speeding on Morrisville Parkway and I drive up and down that road multiple times a day and I see it. And I will tell you, I'm, I'm for one, I am fed up with how people abuse the speed limit on that road. And I purposely go very slow these days, um, to, to make a point, um, when there's somebody coming up really fast behind me. But anyhow, they've been out there recently on Morrisville Parkway and those of us that live out there greatly, greatly appreciate the efforts, um, that hopefully, um, will help slow folks down because we have had some tragic accidents in that road. So, um, so please extend my thanks, um, and especially for, for, I don't speak for everybody up and down Morrisville Parkway, but I've talked to a lot of folks and they're, they're very appreciative. So, thank you for that, Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe that was a statewide effort that they participated in, which is great. Councilmember Rao followed by...
They've done, they've done multiple speed checks, not, it wasn't just the statewide effort that they did recently with DWI. This is, they've been out there, um, over multiple days and multiple weeks and it is, it is noticed and appreciated greatly. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rao followed by Councilmember Caramella.
Just a couple of remarks. First of all, I want to, uh, today, uh, is the, um, in 1990, on July 26th, um, we passed the American Disability Act and today's, uh, National Disability and Independence Day. And, um, at the Raleigh Chamber Diversity Event, they had a really great panel which made me think about just what we can do as a council and a town to continue to address the challenges of those with disabilities. And I think this is something important that not only Morrisville but other towns and cities across the state. So I just wanted to mention that today. Hasn't been talked a lot about, but, and it's an important day and a historic day, um, when we signed the ADA Act. I want to congratulate, uh, the first responder award winners at the Chamber Event, Officer Derek Schmidt and Fire Engineer Kirk Miller. And, um, I want to thank all of our first responders and firefighters and police for all that they do. Launch Morrisville, very exciting. Uh, Mayor and I attended, uh, the event. Uh, we were there attending just to see the information session. Um, cybersecurity event was a very good event, uh, the C-suite executive, uh, series. And I really wanted to thank the Town of Morrisville for the Engage Morrisville SPA, uh, presentation by, uh, Mike Areola, the Director of, uh, SPA for North Carolina. Uh, final two things, uh, the, if you're a veteran business, the Procurement Summit is August 16th at the McKimmon Center in the morning, 8:00 AM. Um, you can go to ncvetbiz.org to, uh, register. Alan Thomas, who's the Southeastern Regional Director for the SPA and former Mayor of Greenville will be the keynote speaker at lunchtime. So, um, and my final thought is I just wanted to mention one thing to a Morrisville resident, um, who's been here for, one of our original residents, uh, in Morrisville, Margaret Broadwell. Um, next week, I think, or the week after, will be here last week here in Morrisville. Uh, she'll be leaving, I think, to go to another county. I think it's Johnson County. But, you know, she was a former mayor, uh, first female mayor, uh, in the county, I think. Uh, her husband Jerry and her have been here for many years. Then she came back and served in the council, so, um, if you happen to see her, just let her know we're going to miss having her in Morrisville. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to mention that today, uh, to the public. Um, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Councilmember Caramella, please.
Um, no comments.
I don't have any comments either. Councilmember Robati?
Uh, no comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Town Manager Paige, anything for the good of the order from staff? Okay. We're going to move right on into our work session then. We have three work sessions tonight. Morrisville Geographic District Maps, Pugh House Options and Town Council Roundtable Brainstorming. Rodney Watkins, GIS Manager, will facilitate the first work session. Mr. Watkins?
I, I won't go over the entire presentation that I, that I brought to council back in April. Uh, by, my two takeaways from that original presentation was to bring back those residents that would be impacted by the different scenarios and then some thoughts on public input sessions. Uh, and I'm a bit rusty with the briefing sheets. I had included that in the briefing sheet, but it apparently didn't make it to council, so I apologize for that. The one attachment did make it, it's the very last sheet, but I'll, I'll go over that in just a minute. The thoughts on the public notification and all these we have done in the past because this would be our fourth redistricting. So we, uh, some of the thoughts include a drop-in session here in, in council chambers and that could obviously depend on the COVID situation or restrictions that we have. So that is one of the options. We've also had the, uh, the, the scenarios displayed within Town, Town Hall. And because I'm up here at Town Hall, if, if, if a resident came in and had any questions, I could certainly ask those. It's not, it's kind of a modified drop-in, it's not a structured time. Another option could be for public input, uh, an online presentation of the proposed maps with an accompanying survey that, that I could create. Uh, and finally, there could be, or, uh, another option could be a combination of those, uh, which could be the online presence and a display. Uh, and, and the last option is, uh, no public input. And again, we have done all of those options and I can accommodate whichever direction council wishes, wishes to go with any of those options. So in the new attachment... Eric, is there another, um, presentation? There should be a... Yes. This is just, uh, the breakdown of the residents that would be impacted based on the scenario. So in Scenario 1, at the very top, 872 residents would be impacted, primarily in that apartment complex that's located on the east side of Davis Drive, would be shifting from one district to, to another. That scenario is the least disruptive. Uh, Scenario 2 is the most disruptive, where it shifts districts around a lot. Uh, and the, the movement between is just saying it moves from, this census block moves from District 1 to say District 4. Uh, but the total residents impacted with that Scenario 2 is a, is a little over 8,000. Uh, and finally, Scenario 3 is about 1,400, a little over 1,400 residents. I'm certainly to, can I answer any questions or if we want to look at the maps again, we can certainly do that, but I just await your direction.
Does anyone have any comments? I mean, just looking at the maps and this, um, I like the idea of disrupting as few people as possible to get to the same place. Um, so that's just my initial thought right off the bat. But Councilmember Robati?
I think though that we didn't get to the same place with these three scenarios, if I recall correctly. Under some of the scenarios, there was a larger, uh, once we'd done all the moves, a larger disparity between districts remained than in some of the other ones. So can you, could we see the, the maps again?
So, uh, when we initially started talking about redistricting, uh, there were certain criteria that I went away with and to, in order to create these maps. Um, and the 5% differential, the plus or minus 370 people, and that's, um, what I worked off of. So in Scenario 1, uh, the left map is the current districts, uh, and the right map is the proposed Scenario 1. It impacts just this area right here to the east of Davis Drive, uh, in the vicinity of Harris Mill.
Right. But didn't a, wasn't there a table that showed... Right, but didn't a, wasn't there a table that showed, like, what the, what the resulting number of people in each district would be under each scenario? I want to remember that.
For this scenario, at the bottom of the page, this is what the new districts would look like.
Oh, okay.
And it, and indicate in parentheses the resulting number, whether it was minus or plus, and it stayed within that, that frame of 370 or so folks.
Oh, okay. All right, well, then I agree with the mayor. I mean, I'd be for the one that caused the least disruption to the least number of people.
Any other thoughts on maps or the public input options presented? Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So, yeah, I do have, I, I would prefer when we, when we do public input that we allow for kind of two methods, like an in-person and then some kind of a virtual. I like the way you, you presented it, Rodney, that, you know, you could offer, go through an explanation online on a Zoom call or a Teams call, and then ask for their inputs some way through a survey. But I, I would, I would prefer to see an in-person and an online version of input, if that, if we can, however you all want to do it, I think would be helpful. That'd be my only input. And I too, I, from the beginning, have said the least disruptive to our residents was, would be my preference, so I haven't changed.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, I agree, least disruptive one, but it's only 872 people, and then public input. I'm trying to understand what will change. It's not going to change any one of our minds here, like what we're trying to do. Certainly, we don't want to go to the high disruptive ones. And that's where it is, then yes, you know, let's have a public input and, you know, basically be ready for all kinds of questions. But this is just such a minor change. And until someone is really waiting for the public, especially this particular scenario, to change their mind, let me know. But I think...
That's a good point.
It is pretty much, you know, I would go with whatever the scenario wants. I would say just, I would not even put just a public input, it's so minimal.
Would anyone else like to share their thoughts before I share a thought again? Okay, seeing none, I would lean towards, if you were saying, like, creating a video and then having a survey afterwards, so it's static and anyone can get to it at any time. We've done some really good videos in the past, so I think that would be a good way to do outreach, that's kind of a combo of both, which is really nice. And I understand completely the thought that will any input really change our mind, but I think it's important to give the opportunity. And if we don't get much comments, that's fine, but we made the effort to make sure, because this is a, this can be a big change. It doesn't look like if we go with Scenario 1, it would be a very big change, but to give the opportunity, I think, would be important. So you guys pretty much did it at the same time. I will say, Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
So, 82 people are affected by this. I, honestly, if, if any of those 82 people could pick me or Donna out of a lineup as their representative, I would be astonished. I just, I, I agree with Satish, I just think this is a kind of a nothing burger in terms of, like, it being a, I just don't think it's that big of a deal, frankly. You know, I think we could send people a letter, letting them know that they have a new representative and be done with it. Maybe with my phone number on it. Put my phone number on there, people like that.
Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So I, I want to thank Councilmember Garamella, because you, and, and Councilwoman Robati just kind of echoed it. You're, you're right, this isn't, this isn't affecting that many people, but I do think we need to make an effort to make that known, so that people aren't, there's not confusion, that this really is a very minor tweaking, so that folks understand that, then, then they kind of worry that it's something that it's not. But, so maybe we don't need to do as, as big an effort, but maybe some kind of, just a public outreach effort so that the, the point is made that it's a minor, the point is made that it's a minor tweaking of the maps. That would be my only thought at this time. But I agree, I agree, it's not, and maybe a letter is the answer, maybe you're right, Ann, maybe a letter is all, all it takes to the, the one, the one group of folks that it, that it affects. Maybe we need to mull that over a little bit, make it easy, whatever is easy.
So I don't know how helpful this has been. You have three people who say that we don't need to do any public outreach. So what, what is it that you're, you're hoping to get from us tonight for moving forward? And what would be the timing of that?
Well, whatever direction consensus on any kind of public input. And I could certainly work with communications to get, we could work on a video, that would take some effort to create a video, we've done that before. I can easily put up a map of Option 1, that's Scenario 1, that's what I'm hearing is, that's the least disruptive option. Put that online, work with communications, do an outreach, but in addition to the text and the map, would there be a survey that would have just a few questions? Is this acceptable? And then an open text box that they could complete, and I can compile that. I could even make it spatially based if I wanted to, if they, if we could tell if they're in Morrisville or if they were outside Morrisville. But the, the direction that, that council would like me to go on that display, I could even have a, a physical map in, in Town Hall in the hallway. It doesn't sound like maybe a drop-in is as, as preferred this time. When we had the original drop-in, we had a lot more maps, so I'm, I'm perfectly fine with not having a drop-in, but...
No reason to show up.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, and then you just jogged something in my mind, so I'd like to have a comment for that.
I vote you do the simplest option, I think. Putting together a video is over the top for this, for this change. So I vote for just going the simplest. I do think it's important to let it be out there and let the residents know, but we're not, we're not looking for input on the town center design, for example. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Town Manager Paige had a comment, too.
Well, thank you.
I, I'd like to remind council that we get criticized for the amount of surveying and input, especially for a decision you're clear on, is, is what I'd offer. Rodney, would you remind council what Wade County Board of Elections would do once you would provide this change to them, and what notification people would get?
Right. I would then provide the GIS data files to the Board of Elections, and then they would send out new cards to people. They, it would, it would be on them to do that.
To those 872 residents?
Correct.
And you said that's mostly in one apartment complex?
Correct.
So there might be some tur, an opportunity for some targeted outreach into that space?
Certainly.
I would think might be appropriate. Okay, recognized, our attorney Frank Ray.
To the town manager's point, I would simply add that everyone in Morrisville gets to vote for every office up here. So these, these 872 people are moved from District 2 to District 1, they still get to vote for the same offices. You know, nothing changes. We have to vote, we have to vote for everyone.
And council...
Only 872 people, there's maybe one candidate.
And council has said that this affects candidates, not people to vote.
That's right.
So we're not a war system, you know, we're not a chance of us voting for pass.
Okay.
Everybody in that apartment complex, you're still allowed to call and ask for their vote.
Okay. So I think, can safely say you have consensus to just do a public information rather than a public outreach to make this known. Okay?
And what does that look like? Is this printing a map? Is this doing online, working with communications?
We could imagine.
And this will have to come back to council for brief and adoption.
Right, the new map, yep. This is a work session, more informational and exchange of information. Mayor Pretam Johnson?
No, I was going to say, I rescind everything I said. We don't need, we don't need a public, in-person meeting, we don't need an online meeting. You can, I'm with everybody, it's simple and easy, communications can handle it, and Wade County is going to notify these, these folks by mail. So I would say we don't even need to mail them, they will be mailed something, so.
Okay, cool.
All right.
Thank you, sir. You, you did all the work in advance and made this easy, so we appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Giselle Redriguez Villanueva, Assistant Town Manager, will facilitate the next work session.
It's been a little while since I last presented to you. And this time, I'm bringing back the Pugh House. The last time we touched on this topic extensively was November 2019. So what I intend to do for you tonight is to do a refresh of that presentation that we had at that time, and hopefully by the end of the presentation, we will have a good conversation that will lead to making, having a consensus on the future use of this facility. So recently, during the budget discussions, council expressed an interest on the Pugh House and considering the Pugh House in the capital investment plan. But in order for us to do that, we need to know the direction that we are going so that it can be properly included for you to consider when we bring back the capital investment plan to you. So what I intend to do is just pretty much refresh the same presentation that we had back in November 2019. To give you a, let me get this. Just a quick background on the Pugh House, is a historic property in the National Register of Historic Properties, that it's owned by the town. Exterior renovations of this property was completed in 2018. That was extensive renovation, and actually, as you drive on Morrisville Carpenter, is a beautiful property that we have adjacent to the road. While the property is adjacent to Morrisville Carpenter Road, the actual address is on Page Street, because that's where the frontage of the house is, and the address is actually 103 Page Street. So I did, at that time, when we came back in 2019, and, and the current status remained pretty much the same, at that time, we had already completed the asbestos remediation in the house, and we had done all the work that we needed to do on the exterior of the property, and we had initiated a site evaluation that will help us determine kind of, what do we have, what are some of the environmental impacts, and what are some of the parking requirements that may need, and what are some of the potential alternatives that we have with this property. As we started doing the initial evaluation, we came to realize that we pretty much hit a stopping point because we needed to know what were we going to use the property for, because the requirements for the property changes depending on the use. So that's kind of where we stopped. Since that time, last year, we did an assessment of this property, because, as you all know, the Parks and Rec Department currently leases property on Southport Properties off of Aviation Parkway. The lease was coming up for renewal, and it was, we determined that it was a good time for us to assess if the Pugh House will be a good location for the Parks and Rec Department to relocate to, so that way we don't, didn't have to continue the lease of the property on Aviation Parkway. So we had a consultant that evaluated the Pugh House to determine if the needs of the Parks and Rec Department could be provided with the space provided for the Pugh House. It was determined that we did not have the square footage that was needed to be able to house the Parks and Rec Department in a way that they can continue not only to operate effectively, but also to provide the service to, to the community for any, any that needed to come in. So it was determined that it was, actually, the property has 1,000 feet below what they really need. So it's, it's not that it didn't fit the need for just a little bit, it's quite a bit of square footage that is lacking in order for it to provide the space that is needed for the Parks and Rec Department. So that takes us to where we are, is that the property, it has, was upgraded, the exterior was done, is preserved, is well-maintained on, on the outside, but when it comes to the inside, and some of you did a tour of the facility, has pretty much remained untouched. We did the asbestos removal, and that's pretty much all that's been done, and we need to start putting some drawings together, some concept, start putting costs together, but we can't do that unless we know what is the future use of this property. There may be many options out there, but we really need to focus on what is the, the future use that we want for this. Code requirements are very specific, depending on the use of the property, and the future use was not determined when we had the last conversation back in 2019. So what do we know? This is about a 2,300 square feet of property, or building. Land size is .25 acres, and this is land size specific to that, to where the house is located. It does not include remnants of town property in between Morrisville Carpenter and Franklin Up Church. There are some remnants of property there that could potentially be utilized as the future use of this facility is defined, but is not included within this .25 acres. Wade County tax record as of 2020 is now increased to 256,600. Zoning for this is historic crossroad village, which allows small-scale retail, like a bed and breakfast, restaurant and offices. However, general offices, government services, and administrative offices are not currently allowed. It will require a rezoning in order for those to be allowed. This is also a schematic from the Morrisville Carpenter Road, and how the widening has actually impacted the property in this area. The right-of-way adjacent to the Pugh House was already dedicated for that section, so we did not lose any more property from Morrisville Carpenter, but the remnants of the property behind, or kind of west, southwest of the Pugh House, did kind of lose some sections or some areas, some square footage, that now will have to be considered as we evaluate potential uses for this property, as it limits the area that we would have to provide parking for future uses. So here we have, there were five options that were presented back in, in 2019, and I would like to go back through all of those five options. Some of these options may be at extremes, ends of the spectrum, that maybe we would like to, to think about, but these are the options that we have in front of us, and we would like to evaluate them based on the information that we have. The first one was to list the property for sale as is. That will mean that we will engage with a broker that has experience on historic property, define the listing strategy, and evaluate what is the interest on the property, what is the market out there for it. The historic restrictions will transfer with the, with the facility, and it will remain in the National, National Register, which then allows for the buyer to apply for any potential grants that could be available, which is currently not available for us, because we're a public entity, but there are grants available for private entities. The next option was to outfit the property for a residential use. If we were to do that, there are some basic costs that will be associated with outfitting the property, whether it is for residential or for commercial use. On this case, for the residential use, we'll have to outfit it in accordance with the current building code. All the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, plumbing is going to have to be completely It will require a concrete driveway for the property. And back in 2019, that cost was estimated to be $250,000. I added an asterisk there, saying cost inflation was not accounted for, because in the last two years, we have seen through so many other projects how that inflation has increased way beyond what we ever anticipated. So depending on how the future use is determined by council tonight, we will go back and take another look at the cost and then come back with what that cost looks like based on today's dollar, or maybe accounting for some potential inflation into the future. But this is the option if we were to outfit it to a residential use. The other option will be to outfit it to a commercial use. If we were to do that, again, we will do it to meet the, the existing building code. Once again, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is gonna have to be redone for a commercial use. It will require some fire alarm to be installed. Sewer and water connection that are not currently present at the property, accessibility will have to be provided, just to make sure that it provides for those that visit the facility, plus those that will operate inside the facility. One thing that was discussed last time, and I know there were some questions, was the, the need to provide an elevator. Based on the building code, there is the potential for that, for the elevator to be required. That is worst-case scenario. We have done some additional look at the, the code as it is. There is the potential for us to be able to get an exemption because this is a historic property. However, it depends primarily if the primary function of the facility is preserved on the first, on the first floor instead of the second floor. So for that, the design of the facility will determine whether that elevator will really be required or not, but there is the potential for being able to be exempt from it. Street closure and the adjacent lot will be needed. Why? Because there's going to be parking and sidewalk accesses and additional ramps that will have to be provided to the building, which, for which we will need more than the .25 acres that we currently have. So essentially, the property, as we were looking at that image earlier, southwest, which is the property that now will be between Franklin Up Church and Morrisville Carpenter, will have to be recombined with this parcel to then increase the acreage that could be available for parking to serve this particular facility. Landscaping will also be part of all of this, and all of the compliance with all codes, not only the building code, but also the UDO compliance. At the time when we developed this option, the estimated cost was $600,000 for outfit, again, not accounting for inflation, as we know that number could be much higher in today's dollars. The next option was to donate the property to the Historic Preservation Organization. That would allow them to apply for grants. It would allow for tax incentives that are not available to us as a public ownership. In that way, the, the Historic Preservation Organization, they will then have the opportunity to decide what the future use will be for them. And last, but not least, the landmark, make it a landmark or, or install a landmark sign, highlighting the historic significance of this property, but not doing any interior renovations. When we did, when we did the presentation back in 2019, at the end of the presentation, council's interest was essentially due just that, for that time, was let's install a sign that highlights the historic significance of the property. And we had the conversation, we actually had a tour out of the house. However, we decided that it was best to wait to do that sign when all of the construction was completed, because with everything going on, we wanted to make sure that there was no potential damage to the sign. So we decided we'll wait until Morrisville Carpenter is completed, it will provide better access for individuals to even be able to, to get to see the sign. However, a future use was not decided at the time. So in 2019, we had made the recommendation to list the property for sale as is, given the limitation of the facility to satisfy the space needs for town operations at that time. Town council expressed interest on keeping the facility. So at this point, we are coming back to you to then seek that direction on what the future use for this facility is, so that it can be included in the capital investment plan. If we, assuming that we do arrive at that decision tonight as to what the future use is, we'll go back to the drawing board and then show you exactly what that, what are the potential for that future use and what could be the actual cost. Because that is actually good information that you will need in order for us to be able to include it in the capital investment plan. But in order for, in order for us to be able to provide you with additional information, we really need that direction from you tonight. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, discussion, direction?
Councilmember Garamella followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
I gotta say, Giselle, you are getting better in this presentation again and again, like, you know, and I still remember what you said, like every word of it, and now it's, it's getting much better. If you go back to the commercial one slide.
Sure.
And while you're saying, I was, a lot of thoughts going back of my mind. And again, like, council, don't, don't shoot me, okay? This is just an idea, I'm thinking loud here. We are going to have, we are going to rent two cottages at Town Green, right, for Public Works, oh no, for Parks and Recs. Is, that's what I was, you know, they were saying. What is the possibility of moving the Pugh House into the Town Green area and rent it, like, let's say, own it and then rent it back to us, so they get a tax credit as a, you know, independent entity? And they had to build something, and there, I, I, like, from my recollection, there are two cottages that we are getting. So if one of these cottages could be used for town use, you already will be getting ADA parkings, and then sidewalks, and landscaping, and water and sewer all into that area when you're putting it. It will help elevate the whole Pugh House from a point of, okay, it's historic, it's in Town Green, and it's getting used by the town. And, and the person who owns it will also get tax credit. So a lot of things which are going in back of my mind.
Yeah.
But I was just throwing an idea, because right now, if I had to say, if it is right there, it's as is, just keep it and landmark, but if we get it here, I don't know the cost of it, but that significantly elevates the visibility of it and also the use of it. That's just a thought process.
So, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this is a property that is in the National Register of Historic Places. In order for the house to be part of that, or for this facility to be on that register, there was very specific significance associated with this facility for it to be there. And the primary reason why it was given that designation was because of the location of the house and the orientation to the railroad tracks. As a matter of fact, when the house was moved from the other side of the tracks over, it had to be rotated facing the tracks in order for it to preserve the historic significance, at which time they evaluated and determined specifically, that is the reason why it has the, the historic designation. So that will have to be preserved in order for it to continue to be as part of the National Register.
That puzzle you didn't tell me, so I'm sorry. I take back whatever I said.
Anything else, sir? No. Councilmember Robati followed by Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
Look at you thinking, outside the box, Satish. Let's move that thing over to Town Green. So I'd like to go to the donate slide. And the reason is because when we talk about the Pugh House, you know, we, I think we're really clear about what we want and what we don't want. And what we don't want is for it to be turned into a Dairy Queen. You know, we don't want, we want the historic aspect of the house to be respected, to be understood, its importance to the town, to be honored. But right now, we are not doing anything with that house. And so, but the Historic Preservation Organization, I'm thinking that that might be the best of both worlds, because the Historic Preservation Organization is not gonna do anything that's gonna, that's gonna mar the reputation, or that's going to hurt the, you know, the grandeur and the, the history of the house. Their, their whole thing is to preserve that. They'll be able to apply for grants to fix it up, return it to its former glory. It can't move from that spot, and the Historic Preservation Organization would be the last people to want to move it from that spot. So I think that giving it over to a nonprofit entity might solve for what we actually want for the house. It, it's not gonna leave Morrisville, it's still gonna be a piece of Morrisville history, but they'll be able to get private money to put into it that we just are not gonna have access to, and there is way more that we can do with $600,000 or even with $250,000. So I would just like to say that I think that we should strongly consider that option.
Mayor Protam Johnson followed by Councilmember Fender.
So I'm gonna ask the question, just so I can ask it, but Councilmember Garamella got me thinking, that the historic landmark designation was really important to get and meant a lot. But if we did move it, and we would, we would just lose that designation. It doesn't mean we couldn't move it. And then, of course, if it was in our control on our ownership, we would take care of it and preserve it, I would hope, just without the designation. Am I, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We, we risk losing the designation, which, having reviewed the document myself, that is pretty much a justification for it, so we will lose that designation. However, we still have to decide, is the future use going to be commercial? So if we decide to move it, that is additional cost on top of whatever that future use will be.
Yeah, no doubt. And I'm not, I'm just asking the question, doesn't mean I want to move it. But I thought that was a good, that was, you're right, that's a good thinking out of the box, and, and, you know, maybe, I don't, that's, thoughts like this are what helped get to a really good solution in the end. So, so there is that possibility if we chose to do it. May I always hear the day, a lot of us were here the day when that, that house was moved, and it was really important and special to us that it, it be cited correctly to, to get that designation. So I still, I'm not interested in, in donating the house or selling it, I'm still interested in keeping it in our inventory for our use. If you need a designation right now, I would say put it under the per, commercial designation and put it on the CIP that way. You know, I've seen CIP projects morph over years, and so if we gotta put it on there and call it that for, in 2022, I'm good with that. We're not gonna fund it in 2022 or 2023, so, and over time, we can, we can make it what it will be. You know, it's my hope that it could be, you know, maybe a, a museum, some kind of a historical place for archiving, and I know others on this council think that way, too. And even could be rented out over time for meeting space or whatever. But I, I will give the, this idea of donating it to a, to a nonprofit, you know, thought. I don't, I'm not sure that I would fall there in the end. I think I'm still pretty, I haven't changed what I said in 2019, so, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Fender followed by Councilmember Rob.
Thank you. Does anyone remember what the cost of moving that house was the first time?
Over a million dollars?
Yep.
And then, yeah.
To move it across the street.
And that was, that's not in today's dollars, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So to me, that investing $600,000 in it for it to be commercial on top, and then spend a million, over a million dollars to move it again, that is the least favorable option. Also, I'm not, I'm not interested in investing $200,000 in it for residential. You know, that, the Pugh House is a unique building, it has a lot of history, hence, it has, it's the historic designation. So I'm not, and then, I'm not interested in selling it as is either. I do like Councilmember Robati's idea. However, I'm just curious, like, what, what are examples of a Historic Preservation Organization that that would go to?
That is definitely something we can look into. There may be multiple out there, and that's something we can look into if that is the desire of, for, for us to explore.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Robati, you know, previously, I've like been against that option as well, and only in favor of keeping it. However, Councilmember Robati makes a good point, that if, if it was the right organization, then it, it could be, it could be a, a good option for us to let that organization apply for the grant and do the preservation for us. But then, if, I guess, still, my, my most favorite option is keeping it, making it historical, historic landmark, and then, as Mayor Protam Johnson has said, the, the museum, Arts Council, you know, the, whatever other options, renting it out as, as space like the historic church could be not, could be done with. So those are, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rob.
Yeah, I guess, I actually have the same, I, the idea of Councilmember Garamella, I, I was thinking, you know, moving it to the green. My idea would have been different, it would have been looking at, you know, when we say commercial use, could it be, is it enough space to be a restaurant, you know, which would be a good use, but I don't know if it's big enough. Is, would a commercial use mean if we kept it where it is, or we can't move it, I guess we've agreed on that, like a bed and breakfast, or is it not big enough? Would that be a residential use or commercial use? Those are the two uses I've always thought of, something like that, something historic, maybe even like a coffee house or something like that. I get creative thinking about kind of the different ways where people can come, spend time there, and enjoy some experience in there. So I just don't know whether the answer then is just to keep it commercial. Like, when you say residential, would it be just residential?
Residential will mean someone living in it. And it, and it wouldn't be someone, let's say, for example, having an attorney's office that has an office downstairs and a residential upstairs that would still be considered a commercial. So residential will be single-family dwelling, someone, a family living there.
So commercial would mean it could be restaurant, office?
All, all of that.
Yeah.
Bed and breakfast as well.
Okay, because I know years ago, I had someone reach out and said they were interested in doing a bed and breakfast. So I think then the best thing is just to designate a commercial and then at least keep it as, keep it where it is, and then, then we just put it in the CIP plan and like Mayor Protam said, and then, you know, to see where we go with there, you know, where we go from there, is probably the best bet, so.
Okay. I think I've always envisioned that as being a place where, like, there's art hanging or some kind of Historic Preservation Society. Is there any opportunity to keep ownership and like lease it to an organization like that? Would that give them enough? Would that give them enough power to actually apply for the grants and help, no, they'd have to take full ownership in order to do anything like that at all?
Correct. It goes back to whoever has the ownership of the property, which on that case, if we were to lease it, it would not give them the right to obtain grants against our property.
Okay. Um, and it seems like some of the cost of going commercial is because of the two floors and you can't split that, right? You can't say that we're only going to up it the top to be residential. It won't be part of the commercial component?
No, once it, once you have a commercial use in it, the whole thing will have to be commercial or the whole thing will have to comply with the code for commercial use. And, and it will also have to be not only the building code, but also the UDO. It will be subject to that specific commercial use.
Okay. I remember a resident talking about it and thinking that it would be really neat to have a person who loves the arts, who actually lives that as a residential, but essentially opens up their home to people to just see the inside and see art and things like that. So, I, I want us to keep the facility. I'd like us to keep ownership and try to find some creative way. Um, I don't see it becoming commercial. I think residential is probably appropriate for it. So, that's where I am at this time. I'd rather not give it away.
And I'll, I'll go back to, if we, if we were to lease the facility, we still be subject to all of the initial costs of bringing the facility to a point that it can be leased. And even if we were to lease it to, to specific use, then it will have to be outfitted for that specific use. Even when there are leases involved in a facility, there are costs that the property owner will be responsible for. So, the majority of the costs that we're talking about for commercial, it will be costs that we will have to incur in order for a lease to even be able to be entertained. And, and I will even say it's, um, even with other properties that we have within our control, that we have leased over time, we have realized that it's really not a cost benefit to us, obviously, to lease some of those facilities compared to the cost that the town invests on maintaining those properties. So, I think as we think about the lease opportunity, we probably should think about as an opportunity to maintain the facility alive for a particular use, but not necessarily because we would expect to have a return of investment or any particular profit.
Yeah, I think, um, to think in those directions, it'd be nice to have a, a town staff or an affordable housing usage. So, we're knowing that we're subsidizing and we're not making money on it, but it's serving a good purpose would be something to think about as well. Um, I think we've all had a chance to speak and I saw Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Martha, correct me, that the million dollar was just not for the move. It was for restoration and like all the other things, right? Because I-
Yeah, the-
The cost was $875,000, we had additional costs that gets you to about a million to just get into where the state of the day.
So, 875?
That's my recollection.
Yeah, I, I, like the 875 included restoration of where it-
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I remember. We can break down-
And, and part of it, part of it was related to having to cross railway tracks that were, as I understand it-
That was the most-
-humped, humped as well.
I just wanted to say, like, you know, it's not like moving from there to there, it could be, it's, the cost of moving is different than restoration and other things that are, went into it. That's a lot of work that went.
That, that also included that we purchased the mobile home for Billy then to live in. This was his home that we took from him and we bought a, a mobile home for, or not a manufactured home. So, included that too. So, you're right. It would, the move itself was not that much.
Yeah, exactly. So, I just wanted to keep, keep that in context, obviously. And, and the other thing is whoever drew the picture is wrong because that house is not facing the, the railroad.
Artistic interpretation.
She'll be happy to hear that feedback. Uh, Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I, I had a, a question or clarification. So, if, if we're saying we would designate it as commercial, that's just for zoning purposes, right? And not that we are going to make that building commercial?
Even within the designation of commercial, there is a, a huge spectrum of commercial uses that could be considered for that particular property. Once we determine we want to go commercial, we then will have to decide which specific commercial are we going after because some requirements will depend on the specific use. As, um, let me take you back to some of the earlier. Based on that particular zoning, small-scale retail, bed and breakfast, restaurant and office uses are uses that are allowed in that particular district. So, anything related with offices, government services and administrative offices, which are also commercial, are not allowed. So, we have, like, the first, um, option there gives you a list of three different commercial uses that are not allowed within the zoning district for which a rezoning will be required. The second one gives you about four different commercial uses for which the zoning is allowed. So, even when we say we want to designate this facility for a commercial use, we then need to get more, a little more specific after we do that as to what does that commercial look, a commercial use looks like? So, we know specific as to whether a rezoning will be required and what some other code requirements could come into play.
But I don't think we're requesting it to first, "commercial use."
If I could just chime in, I think-
Why?
Anything other than a single-family home is a commercial use.
Correct.
If that clarifies. Anything else other than a single-family use is commercial.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to bring it up as a design, as, as a clarification. If we're saying it's commercial, it doesn't mean we're gonna sell it to someone for commercial use. It doesn't mean we're gonna make it a restaurant or bed and breakfast, right?
Correct, yeah. If you decide you want to go commercial, we'll keep it at that concept, but that means anything other than someone living in it.
Yeah.
And then, we'll define what that looks like later.
So, in Historic Crossroad Village, um, does not include historic buildings in that zone?
Within that zone, the way it's written is intended to preserve the historic component of the area, which is, the Historic Crossroad Village is kind of like an overlay within that Main Street Town Center zoning. So, the Historic Crossroad Village is particular to this area and doesn't exist anywhere else in Morrisville.
Okay. I just, I mean, if it's something that we created, couldn't we have it be whatever we want it to be?
As far as the facility?
No, of defining what that zone means. Does that make sense? I have a, I have an issue designating that space as being commercial.
But it's, it's not designated commercial today. It's designated Historic Crossroads Village, which allows for small-scale retail, bed and breakfast, restaurants and office. That's what's allowed now.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, that zoning district allows those types of uses, which are considered commercial uses.
Mm-hmm.
The thing you have to remember about zoning is, yes, you can change it to whatever you want, but it applies to everybody in the zone, not just what you have. So, that's why you have to think about those decisions.
But what if, are, are we saying we're going to get rid of this Historic Crossroad Village zone?
I don't think that's what's being said.
No.
Then why, why wouldn't we, if it's some, a zone that we made up, why wouldn't we, I mean, we can make it include anything we wanted?
The town would do a rezoning request for itself, is what you're talking about.
So, very similar to some of the other cases that we see with private development where the zoning not necessarily fits the use that they intend to have and they may come back to you for a, for a rezoning or even a conditional rezoning that fits the need of that particular parcel. It's the exact same process that we will need to follow if we were to pursue any of the uses within that first bullet under the zoning. If we were to use, to go, let's say, with a bed and breakfast, for example, is allowed by right and a rezoning or conditional rezoning will not be required. That's not necessarily specific of what we're seeking from you tonight. I think you're going to have more opportunities to evaluate that specific later. Uh, but we were looking as to more of those five options that we presented to you is which of those five is the one that you would like to continue to pursue.
So, what if we are wanting, we got consensus to pursue it as a historic building and as our, or as a historic landmark? What would you need to do?
With the option of historic landmark, the intention there was, we will put a sign out there to say, "This is a historic building," and explain what the historic significance of that property is within the language of the sign itself, but not doing any changes to the, to the facility on the inside, essentially remaining the exact same way it is. The only thing we would do is just go out there and put a sign in the ground that provides an information about the property.
What would you do with regards to zoning? Would you need to do anything?
Nothing. Nothing, we'll just need to get a sign permit. That's all.
Then why, I, I, I just completely do not understand then why, if we decided we wanted to keep it as an historic landmark, then why would we want to designate it as commercial?
What we are seeking, uh, what, the reason why we're having this conversation is to that we can determine a future use of the property. So, leaving the property as is, as a landmark, is not defining a future use because it means that the piles will continue to be there with no use at all. Um, I'll even take it a step farther to say, we are doing everything we can to keep the property on the outside very well maintained, but our lack to, if we don't decide on a future use anytime soon, the interior of the house will continue to deteriorate because the, there's not really anything occurring on the inside. There's no maintenance occurring because there is no defined purpose for it. So, at some point, we're going to have to make a decision to decide, how do we preserve the inside and what are we going to intend it for so that we can at least preserve it? We can preserve the shell, but the inside is also important and is something we need to define very soon.
All right. I still am left being confused, but that's enough. I'll, I'll figure it out.
Mayor Protam Johnson, then myself.
So, can you go back to, to the other slide you just had up where you talked, where you had the two bullets and you showed what is allowed right now? So, right now, there are some commercial uses that are allowed in the building. So, it already really is being preserved for commercial use. If we wanted to use it as, like I, I talked about, as a, um, you know, for archive, a museum, that would be, I guess, a government use? Is that what? Okay, so, that would fall into that first bullet where you say offices, government services, administrative offices are not currently allowed. We, as a council, can add that to the Historic Crossroads Village designation if we want to. And then, therefore, the building then would be allowed to house a museum or whatever. Okay. And to town manager's point, then everything else in Crossroads Village would also be up for grabs for use as government services or offices.
Correct.
There, therefore lies the, you need to be careful, if you're going to change it, you got to do it for the whole district.
Correct.
But would that be such a bad thing?
No. Uh-uh, no. Uh-uh. I'm just saying it to get it out there. No, that's not a bad thing.
And that's what I was trying to get to, is if we, and I, I didn't single out the government, if, if we wanted to have it its use, future use as a government building and it's not currently allowed in the Historic Crossroads Village, we could add it to that zone.
No, we can't add to the zone, we've got to change the zone.
Right. We can change the definition of that zone and add it as a use.
That's a UDO. I, I don't know, that's smart zoning then, pretty much it becomes.
No, no, for, it would be for the whole area then.
Correct.
Not just for one parcel. It would be for the whole area if we chose to do it that way.
Town manager Paige, I think had something to add.
No, that, that is, I, I was trying to get to Councilmember Fender's question. In this instant, no, it may not be a difference, but when you look at those zoning decisions, you just have to always recognize as a part of your decision-making process that you're not considering it for just the person presenting the zoning case, it's for everybody that would be in that district. So, just the same criteria would apply to us.
Yeah, I, but I guess in, for this example, I don't see allowing all the buildings or any development in this particular zone as being a government building would not be a bad thing.
That's why you have a planning department to, to help you answer those questions. I don't, I don't have that answer.
I mean, we're not ask, I'm not asking that we would change this zone to include strip joints, you know? Uh, it's just a government building.
There's a limited amount of people who are going to, want to use it for government use, so-
Right, right.
A limited amount of agencies, so.
Do you have more to add, Mayor Protam?
That's all I wanted to say.
If we could go back to the slide with the five choices, I'll try to, um, in the talk of commercial, the way I interpreted that when Mayor Protam was talking about it, I think as a placeholder in our CIP, because I didn't hear much support for having it go residential, either as affordable housing or for staff. So, there doesn't seem to be support for that. So, I think residential is not something we're looking at. Donating had mild support. I think everyone sees it as a landmark, so I think that that happens by default, no matter what. And I think at this time, a placeholder in the CIP at the commercial cost is probably, if we're going to improve it, that's the level it sounds like we're interested in at this time. But for right now, it seems like it's an as-is that we're kind of waiting to do something with. So, I think the answer for tonight, I think, is commercial as-is landmark, if that's possible.
I just, I disagree because-
Okay, that's how I interpreted it.
I just don't want, well, well, if you're going to put it in the CIP, why could, why do you have to label it "commercial"? Why couldn't you label it "government building" or "historic landmark"? I do not want the message long, if it shows up in the CIP as, as a placeholder and designated "commercial," what type of, I mean, I do not want our intent to get lost and all of a sudden, our town council, our future town councils think that we determined that we wanted that building to be commercial space.
So, could I, would just non-residential use address that for you?
I guess, but what, what's wrong with government building?
Well, right now, it's not allowed. Now, you'd have to go through a process, but it, you're trying to establish the use before you even know what a potential cost to do something and how you prioritize it in a CIP would be.
Okay.
So, it's about-
Non-residential sounds good to me.
Yeah, if the label matters, it's just the, the level of money to put in the CIP as a placeholder.
And let me see if this helps. How I and Giselle, correct me if I get off a track, to me, we're saying "commercial," but what that means to me is, the public of some form or fashion is going to have access to this building because it won't be somebody's house. And that just triggers a whole bunch of other stuff that has to happen to bring it up to some level of standard than if just a family was living in a house. It's set up as a house. If it becomes some other kind of use, aside from elevator, it's bathrooms, it's water pipes, it's whether utilities control a whole bunch of rooms or one room, all of those things- things start triggering your cost. How many parking spaces you need? Are there ADA ramps? That's, it, it's that the public is allowed to come in that is what it means to me.
What's the historic church designated as?
I don't know that answer.
Commercial.
Commercial. That's what, even government building is commercial.
Thanks, Satish. I wasn't asking you.
We were going on, because for me, I thought it was.
So, so, so you guys can talk forever and ever, but I'm not allowed to?
I didn't say that. Why do you pick on me when others will talk?
What?
Okay.
All right.
This has been a good discussion.
Yeah. And just as, as town manager Paige mentioned, this direction tonight is not to define a specific use, but to give us direction to be able to provide, go back to the drawing board, determine what that cost looks like so that we can provide you the information so that when you receive the capital investment plan, you can make an informed decision based on the data that is presented. Based on the information that we have right now, as you can see, we have five options, and we are trying to narrow that down to one particular lane where you can focus on when you are evaluating the CIP. So that's, that's the intention of our presentation tonight, is to be able to get the direction that you desire so that we can provide you more information. But there will be more opportunity for, for you to evaluate what the specific use looks like. What is it that we want to consider to have at this particular building?
Okay. And I think it's helpful that even if it was going to be donate, it would have to be raised to a commercial level of service. So it sounds like we need to have staff look into what those costs would be.
Well, if we were to donate it, you'll donate it as is. You wouldn't incur necessarily on any cost.
Right. But they would need to know what those costs are too, and that would help inform their decision.
Yeah. Well, well, cost will be different probably for, for some other individuals that it could be for us, but yes.
Why would you say that? Because there's a minimal level that we're raising it to, so they would have to do that as well, would they not?
Well, why would we do their work for them?
Because it doesn't sound like we're looking to donate it. It's just, I was just saying that by investigating the commercial level, it would serve that purpose too and help them. If we're going to donate to someone, we could be doing their work for them, we're helping them. No harm done. But I think we're, it sounds like we're circling.
Yeah. We, I didn't hear that there was necessarily a consensus related to the donation, so.
There wasn't. I was just putting that out there. That covers a couple of the different things that you put in. Sounds like residential is not the way we're going, so that's the important takeaway from tonight.
So based on what I hear, it, it appears that we have somewhat of a consensus to then come back to you with information considering this is a commercial use for purposes of defining a cost that can be included in the capital investment plan, and then we'll include that on, on Genie's plan that will be coming back to you soon. So is, is that what I'm hearing? Just, I just want to make sure that I walk out of here with the specific information as what I need to bring back to you.
Yes, but I would also add that words matter, so the non-residential landmark use might be really important.
Yeah, I'll just add a, a quick clarification that again, Giselle can correct me if I'm wrong, that this unique opportunity slide was presented two years ago, and these were the five options we were given. Council did provide direction to put the landmark out there after Morrisville Carpenter Road was done. So at this point, really, as-is and landmark are both going to be the case. It, it is the other three that were, just a clarification.
Thank you.
Okay. Got what you need?
I think I got it. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. So we're looking to take a break right now. You want to check on the time?
Can I, can I make a, can I make a suggestion? It is, it has been a long night. It is late. The next item was on the agenda as tentative anyhow, and I would, I don't, I'm not, I would be, I'm suggesting that we push this item to a night when we have less items on the agenda, and I, I think September is looking to be like a good time, so I, I'm just going to throw that out there for.
I'm not interested in starting a roundtable at 10 o'clock at night, for sure.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Not doing a roundtable at 10 o'clock at night. The last rolling calendar Martha shared with us showed that September is going to be a lighter month, at least the way it looks now. So if, maybe that would be better, if we can end up doing this at an earlier time than night.
Okay. Did anyone else have any roundtable items that they were going to bring forth tonight?
No.
No one did? Okay. Well, if people want to go ahead and socialize them in advance of that one, those are things that we can always discuss. It doesn't have to be a formal roundtable to give staff direction. So anything for the good of the order, town manager Paige? It seems like we're going to be postponing the roundtable at this time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would now thank everyone for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. Is there a motion and second to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protam Johnson, a second from Councilmember Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six zero. It is nine fifty-six. We are adjourned. Thank you all.